Five, BCC meeting in Dufuniac Springs. All the commissioners are here. And I'd like to thank everyone for being here. I appreciate you taking the time out of your day to come and spend time with us and to share your thoughts with us. Jason, would you please come up and lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we honor you today. We exalt your holy name. We thank you for your goodness and your mercy that's leading us and we just glory in that you're with us and that your presence is near us. The book of Proverbs says, "By mercy and truth iniquity is purged, and by the fear of the Lord men depart from evil." You also told us in the Sermon on the Mount, "Blessed are the merciful, for they shall obtain mercy." I pray that that be get in our spirits today, that we would be a merciful people, that we would be full of love and compassion. And yes, let's stand for the truth, but it could be done in a right way. And I just give you all the glory for what you're going to do today. Allow wisdom to be imparted to our commissioners and citizens, that we be on the exact path, the perfect will of God that you want us in. And I give you the praise for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, do we have any elected officials in the audience? Mr. Bagby, aren't you an Okeechobee County elected official? Welcome. Okay, the meeting is called to order. Let's consider any additions or deletions. Mr. Sunday, do we have any additions or deletions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do not have any additions or deletions to the agenda.
Wonderful.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Any public comments? If you're not going to be able to be here and there's an item on the agenda that you would like to speak to, you are welcome to come forward now. Is there anyone that would like to speak to something that will not be here during the time it will be brought up? Yes, sir.
Ryan Brown. I don't have anything to speak on about today's agenda, but I did want to come and thank each of you for the pylons you put at Grady Brown Park. That was, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is this young man. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda for further Seeing none?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as is. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Okay. There are a couple of things that we weren't, I wasn't quite sure about, but I understand that we have a gentleman in this room who has been serving 25 years with this county. And I'm going to ask Mr. Sunday if he would say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going to recognize Deputy Bobby Hope today. I believe today is his last board meeting with us, with the sheriff's office, and quite frankly, I think it's his last day in uniform. So Bobby and I go quite a ways back. Actually hired Bobby from the city of Knoxville in 2001. And until that time, he had served on our reserve unit here and was full-time with the city of Knoxville, the police department there. And in 2001, hired Bobby, came on board, and along the way, he's had a couple bumps here and there, but he kind of finally found himself when he ended up as a bailiff in the courthouse and then rose into the ranks of supervision and has done well, has done really well here in the courthouse, serving the sheriff and serving this board. So we're going to miss him. We appreciate all of his service. And come back and see us from time to time, Bobby.
Absolutely. I believe there's also one other person in this room that is about to retire from the county after I think it's 22 years of service. So if Mr. Alfred would come up forward and say a few words about this gentleman, we'd certainly appreciate it. I don't want to give it away before he gets up here.
It's Alfred, by the way.
What did I say?
Alfred.
Oh.
I'm kidding. But when it comes to Dave Sale, who is the one she's speaking of, I don't know if you've ever heard of addition by subtraction, but that may be what we're getting here. I'm kidding. Dave's been awesome to work with. I haven't had a chance to work with him alone in our department, but he's always been a great team player and he's always been somebody there that's been for us. If we needed anything, he stepped outside of what his purview is and always helped us. So many thanks to him and we really appreciate him.
Thank you. Dave, would you stand up? Would you stand up, Dave, so we know who we're talking about? Thank you very much for all your service. We really appreciate it. It's been a long time and I know you've got a well-deserved retirement coming up and I hope you enjoy it. Thank you. Okay, let's see. We've got through this, so now we are at citizen's request. Would you like to take it over, Mr. Sunday?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first citizen request is Ms. Amanda Richards. She's here. She comes forward. She wants to speak to the board about egress off of Mack Bayou Road.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today.
So I live- state your name, please.
I'm Amanda Richards. I live at the entry of Driftwood Estates, at the end of Mack Bayou Road.
Okay.
I'm here today about the S-curves going down Mack Bayou. I'm not sure if many of you are aware, we had a major wreck back on May 5th that shut down the entire road, starting at 2:30 in the afternoon. I was notified by before 3 o'clock that my children were not going to make it home, that I could not get to them, and there was no way. It took until 4:30 that day for Sandeston to be able to open their back gates, because this was at the very beginning of the S-curves, to allow us to be able to get out. We had personnel from the hospital that was not able to make it to work because they'd shut down Mack Bayou. And the whole reason a lot of us are there is for ease of access to the hospital and everything back there. I'm here requesting today for the power lines along the S-curves to be buried. They have been hit multiple times. They were hit on May 5th and they came very close to being hit again on May 9th, within a foot of being hit and taken down again in the same curves. These curves have a speed limit of 25 to 35 miles per hour and people go off the road off of them all the time. We have over 1,000 houses back there. I think it's 1,006 houses from the S-curve back, and if you take that and multiply it by at least two to three people, it's at least 3,000 people that live back there with one access in and one access out. I'm requesting today for permanent access for the Mack Bayou residents to be able to have access gate to Sandeston. When they did finally open the back gate, we have to go off-road to be able to get in and out. It's not really safe. Buses, we're having to go through there at 5:30 in the afternoon trying to get kids home. So I would really, I'm asking the commissioners to help give us access to make it safe for us to live back there. We live on a point. There's one way in and one way out. It's not safe. It's not feasible, especially with storms. We were trapped back during Sally for three days. It took over two days for them to open up Sandeston's gates to let us out during Sally. They only opened it up from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM the next day, and we were trapped another day before we were allowed out. So I'm asking the commissioners to put in for buried power lines on the way back of these S-curves because they are so dangerous. We've just had new curbs put in along that S-curve that make it even more dangerous with the 18-wheelers and everything that come back there, along with fire personnel. And I'm just asking for some safety for the people that live back there, for my children that go to school at Butler, and to be able to get to my kids when I need to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Amanda. I appreciate that. I think what we'll do is we'll get with our county engineers and see what we can do. I think there is another exit through to Goldsby, through that direction. That's okay. That's okay. We'll just, we'll work with them and see if we can come up with-
That's way before the S-curves. That's way past, this is way beyond this.
Okay.
That wouldn't do any good.
Okay. We'll look for some other options, okay? We will talk with our county engineers and see if there's anything that we can do.
There's a gate at West Harbor View that's off-road. It's the only gate back there and it's only for emergencies. And I've lived here since 2020 and I've only seen it open two times for emergencies.
Right.
And we get trapped. And it's just-
I understand. We will look into that. We will find out why it takes so long to get that gate open and what the access is there. But I will ask that once you relinquish the podium, that you do not come back to the podium. Once you've stated what you're going to say, once you go turn around, then you've relinquished the podium. That's just for that item. That doesn't mean that you can't come up for another item or something, or speak at the end of the time, but that way, just to keep order, okay? All right, and the next one?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Who makes the determination when the emergency gates are open?
I don't know if it would be, Mr. Sunday, would that be yourself?
We'll get with, so the gate there has actually been a longstanding point of contention between the Sandeston Development and the owners of Driftwood. As I have always understood it, and I don't know, there's a written memorialized document to this effect, that the sheriff and emergency management in the times of a state of emergency have the authority to open that, but it has to be declared state of emergency is the way this has traditionally been treated for those rules to kick into effect. We can get you a complete breakdown on that. It has not been done in the last, probably not in the last 10 or 15 years. It's not actually been declared as a state of emergency that warranted the opening of that, is my understanding.
But we will get with staff and have them check and see what we can do to make that a better option for us. So I think that's something that we need to put on our top priority list, because it is a problem.
And I think the other concern there, of course, is what does open for emergency mean? Is it for emergency vehicle usage versus for persons getting out? That's, I think, the other part of that discussion.
As far as the utility relocate, I guess you wouldn't relocate, you would-
Underground is what you mentioned.
You would, yeah, you would bury the line. Is that some type of agreement that would be arranged, like with the residents that live back there in FPL, or do we have involvement in that?
It's probably going to be, excuse me, it's probably going to be directly with FPL, but we can certainly reach out to them under the concept of licensing and talk to them about what that could look like. That's not been uncommon for the county to do in other circumstances.
I think what we can do is we can have staff come back at the next meeting and give us a breakdown of what the possibilities are and what they can do, so that we'll all know.
Yeah, the S-curves are further south than that gate, so that's an entirely separate area we have to address on Mack Bayou.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is Tabitha Howard, who wants to speak about Sandeston DRI beach vending controlled by Sandeston Investments.
Hi, Tabitha Howard, Sandeston. I have asked this item to be placed on today's agenda to discuss what is happening in Sandeston. As many of you already know, the Sandeston Beach has recently implemented new rules which allow the vendor beach chairs to be placed very close to the water. And all non-vender equipment is required to be behind the vendor beach equipment. After reviewing the pertinent documents related to this, it seems this is allowable within SDI's rules. As the Sandeston Beach is not deeded to Sandeston homeowners, but instead, the beach is owned by SDI and other entities. Access is granted by, but the homeowner's access is granted by easements. This leaves one outstanding question. Where does the private beach end? And where does the public beach begin? So additionally, this needs, sorry, I'm just very nervous. I've had a really stressful morning, stressful week, actually. If the vendor's chairs are seaward of the ECL, does this constitute a code violation? And if so, what can be done to remedy this? Is the public allowed to sit below the erosion control line or the mean high-water line without harassment? Perhaps I'm just too close to this situation, but the code enforcement SDI relationship seems very chummy. And-
Thank you. Thank you, Tabitha.
Yeah, we need to identify.
I think that's going to be an item that's on our agenda that's going to be discussed in a little while as well.
Okay.
So thank you very, did you have any other comment?
No, I just want to identify because we have these very rude signs there in Sandeston and it just, it just breaks my heart every time I see it and I see people looking at it and they've got their children and they're going, well, you can't go up there, because they're some guests that they don't know the rules. And I'm seeing children, they're going back and they're not even getting in the sand and they're like, Mom, I wanted to play up in the sand and, or by the water. And their mom's like, no, we don't want to get in trouble. And I go, oh, this is crazy. Something needs to be done. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sunday, I believe that you are up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item's an update and request for direction regarding the county health department's primary care program. That particular primary care program is in a deficit. Ms. Holly Holt is here and is making a request of the board to consider funding shortfall on the primary care program.
Good afternoon, Holly Holt, Health Officer Administrator for the Department of Health in Walton County. Yes, I am here today because we are looking at an opportunity, a need for some additional dollars for our health department, specifically the primary care program. So I am requesting today, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. What has happened in the past couple of years with our fiscal year? We had come to the board when there was some, there was an opportunity to give our nursing staff a raise, increases, because the governor had allowed that during that year, but we had no funding that came with it. So in order to keep some of my staff, I was able to increase some of their salaries that would be competitive to what we have going on in our community with healthcare. We know we've got the new hospital, there's going to be something else coming, I believe, here this month. So a lot's going on in the community and trying to keep primary care going. So I thank you for those dollars that we received that year, but last year when we had asked, you know, because we were told at that point we weren't going to be able to get it the next year, so we weren't able to receive the funding last year, fiscal year. So because of that, we were trying to figure out what we could do internally to increase those dollars, the revenue, to bring back so we would be able to continue the primary care that we have in our community. And we tried to do several different things, but we have found in the last year, we are seeing several, several uninsured individuals in our community. And I have those statistics. We have seen about 66% of an increase of uninsured in the south end, and I believe we're at about 40%, well, maybe 60% and then 40% in this area, Dufuniac and Paxton. Our Santa Rosa clinic is actually covered through Ascension. We have the MOU with NELM Ascension and us and with the residency program, so the dollars aren't really needed in that area. It's really more for our Dufuniac and Paxton area that we're looking at for additional dollars. We do have the same salaries across the board, if you're working coastal, if you're working Paxton, if you're working here in Dufuniac, but because of that, we have not been able to get back to where we hoped we were going to be, because we're looking at more of uninsured and we're not getting any additional dollars. So my request today is to ask for some dollars to help us get through the fiscal year, and I'm requesting for around $100,000 to help us make it through the fiscal year. We will come back during budget after we pull together and look at our numbers to see kind of where we are for the next year. We won't know that for the next couple of weeks on that, because that's how our system works with the Department of Health, when you start putting in your different numbers. So are there any questions for me that you have?
Well, first I have a question for Melissa. Melissa, I believe there's $75,000 in a particular fund that would be able to accommodate this?
Yes, ma'am. We budget HICRA Healthcare Responsibility Act dollars, and those have not been requested this year. We're already in the middle of May. We saw a decrease in those several years ago and that has continued. I know with one hospital eligible, it looks like one hospital's eligible for it this year. I believe North Walton, North Walton Doctors Hospital may be eligible next year, but it looks to me like for the current year, it's Ascension. HICRA is a payer of last resort. So if a hospital's able to recoup that funding somewhere else, they're not going to request the HICRA dollars. It looks like that is why we have got that pot sitting there and it has not been touched. But that is $75,000 for this year.
Okay. And what about the other $25,000?
In looking at, as we've started the budget, we're looking at where all the accounts stand, and I believe that we've got a little bit of extra funding in the board's insurance account. That's just general fund dollars that could be utilized for this.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we provide $100,000, $75,000 from the HICRA funds and $25,000 from the board insurance account.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Would anyone like to speak to this?
I have one.
You're not the audience. No one from the audience? Okay.
No one.
Okay. Is there, oh, okay. Come on up, and then I'll get you.
Randy Lightner, L-I-G-H-T-N-E-R. I don't think this is going to be an issue, getting you guys to pass that, but she mentioned the uninsured. I just want to mention the insured as well. My son, when he had his accident, we actually purchased a new policy for him and it was the top of the line. The best Blue Cross Blue Shield you could get because of everything he was going to have to have done. Even with that, from Pensacola to Tallahassee, not one single in-network doctor would see him because of the extent of his injury. The only place we could go was the health department. And I was so upset about that and I felt like, you know, this kid's been through so much, he doesn't deserve this subpar care. We couldn't ask for better care. I now see the same doctor at the health department. He's actually a PA, but the doctors are great, too. I think anything that they need, it serves the entire community, not just the underserved. I don't know where we would be right now, but my son definitely would not be where he is right now without the health department. So I just wanted to speak in support.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. Thank you. It looked like that got you a little bit choked up.
It did.
Okay, so did you want to speak to this?
I just want to make sure that you don't have to keep coming up here every year. It's going to be on the plan to look at this for future reference, correct? Because, you know, I don't think we need to, we need to put something in stone where she can keep her head above water, to be honest with you, and not come in here piecemealing a couple coffers together just to get her by. So I just want to make sure that we're going to come back and see this for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair? Well, I mean, I guess I'm the one that's going to have to have the tough conversation. It's not about whether or not the desire is there to facilitate the healthcare delivery services in our county or in our community. It's what we, we as stewards of the public's checkbook, we can't, I mean, this is the ultimate scenario where we're trying to spend our way out of debt. There's no plan. When this issue came up before the board last year, I was very, I was very open and very straightforward in that I was not going to support the raises. And I was the only board member that did not because I said this exact scenario would play out. So what we did is we spent down the road to get us here in order to spend down the road. And until, I mean, that's diametrically opposite of what I believe the responsibility of conservative government looks like. So I have to, I want to see what the plan is to go in this direction and not in this direction. But what it sounds like to me is that we're trying to hope our way into coming up with a plan for these monies to appear from somewhere.
Okay. So I'm going to answer that. We do have a strategic plan, but what happened this last?
But I'm not talking about shifting around, I'm not talking about a shell game where we're shifting around pots of money, and we're Robin Peter, and we're paying Paul, and we're doing all this to get us by, to satisfy the requirements and the funding of the program, pay for it out of a different plot. I mean, at some point, you have to have, whatever your overall vision is for the health department, whatever our, whoever our contributing partners are, the federal government, the state government, the local government, we have to have a collective plan into moving us into perpetuity. And this is absolutely, and I'm going to have to use this word, there's no dispute that each person in this room, each person on this table, at this table, has the desire in our heart to make sure that our children have the brightest opportunities in the world, that their healthcare services are met. But there is that fundamental rationale that has to be applied as government in what that responsibility looks like, who pays for it, and how we establish continuity.
Sure.
And what we're doing right here is we're saying that socialism is acceptable. And that's, that's not going to pay benefits down the road. We've been through socialistic experiments through the last four years at the federal level, and now we're seeing a lot of painful unadjusting to that. And so I just can't support a continuation of that ideological business model. So we've, I haven't heard how we're going to do it. Yet we just happen to have contingency funds. We have pots of money that exist that we can cover this need. But I said this a year ago, that yes, while the authority was granted by the governor in the state of Florida to apply those raises, it doesn't mean that it's necessary that we do. And we had to make that fiscal decision on whether we do or we didn't. The board passed that four to one. But until I, until I can determine what the plan is, I mean, I understand the goal, but until we have a plan, I just can't support that.
Well.
Madam Chair? Um, I understand Commissioner Drake's comments, but I would like to agree with Commissioner Curry that what this needs is to be put in the budget at realistic numbers. Because the truth is that a substantial number of our citizens in Dufuniac and Paxton rely on the health department for their primary healthcare. Now, some of those pay, some of those pay a portion, and then unfortunately, some pay nothing, but we're still on the hook to provide the service. And, but if we're going to be on the hook to provide the service, I believe, I don't mean to put words in Commissioner Curry's mouth, but I think what he's saying is we need to put it in the budget, and we need to be realistic. So what I would ask is that as we approach the budget cycle, that we put these dollars in the budget so you don't have to come back up here and with your hat in your hand, because that's not fair. So let's be realistic about it because healthcare is important.
But respectfully, how do you not come back with hat in hand if you're not making the necessary adjustments in today's time? A year from now, how is it going to magically just disappear?
I don't, I'm.
Commissioner?
Let me.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would just answer that healthcare is important. And a substantial number of our, of our citizens in Dufuniac and Paxton rely on this service. So I think the responsible thing is to provide for it in our budget at realistic numbers. And I think that's the key. You know, we can't put $100,000 in there and then wish for money. We're going to have to say what it costs and then provide for that as a partner with the state and federal entities. And I defer to Ms. Thomason.
Well, Mr. I just wanted to mention, and Ms. Holt, you may want to elaborate on this, but the funding model for all of the health department's dollars are based on different calculations. So primary care has its own calculation. If I'm not mistaken, it has not been updated since.
1998.
1998. And it is in the process of, you've got, there is a work group, they are working to update it, which that, you know, I can't promise you it's going to make a difference, but that's the way all the funding pots work, and that one is in the process of being updated. But.
But that's been, that's been a static contribution year after year after year. So you know the certainty going into it year after year after year. But what we're doing is we're, we're asking for uncertainty. At the time that we approved the raises, we were downward or stable, one or the other.
We were stable.
And then we asked for the raises, and I wanted to proceed with caution. And now we went from stable to down.
Because of the uninsured that we have seen over this last year, it has been a large amount. You cannot, and this is one of the things.
But you have to plan for that. I mean.
Sometimes you cannot. Our projections have been totally off from the last few years for whatever's going on in the world today. And you know, there's a lot going on in the world today. I have no control over that. I cannot stop anybody from coming into the doors. Whoever comes into the doors, we have to accept. I can't.
Oh, I know that. I understand the federal law. I understand.
Yeah. This last year has been worse than any year I've ever dealt with, and I've been doing this since 1998.
Ms. Madam Chair?
Okay. Go ahead.
Ms. Holt, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was an opportunity after the budget had already been gone by. You had no idea the governor wasn't going to agree with this. And while he did agree with it, he allowed no funds for this. What we were in was a situation, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, where our best nurses at the health department were leaving.
They were.
They were leaving or fixing to leave. And that's not something Ms. Holt can control. The market dictates that. And without those nurses, we might as well shut the health department down. I mean, we all know how important nurses are to your healthcare. In fact, now, more and more, you're seeing the nurse or the practitioner than you are the doctor.
Yes.
I've been out there. I understand Mr. Drake's point, too, very much. I'm a financial conservative also, and I hate spending money out of budget. But when you're dealing with a 60% increase in the south end.
I think.
And a 40% increase of uninsured in the north end, that's not something you would have projected. I mean, you project on base what you did last year.
Right.
And you guess at the future.
I saw you don't.
If you would have come in here last year during budget time and said, look, I project without any evidence that we're going to have a 60% increase in non-insured in the south end and a 40% increase in non-insured in the north end, we would have laughed at you. We'd have said, where are you getting this information? This is a, this is a thing that since COVID, every year, the health industry seems to be overwhelmed with the next thing. And, and the uninsured, you know, we have to take care of everybody. As you said, we have to go in, you have to go in. If I walk in there and say, I'm not insured, but I'm sick, you have to see me. And you have to see me right away. And I've been out to the health department. I've seen what y'all have done. And I know your, your job is extremely difficult, coming up with a budget that's going to last all year. Now, if you knew, if you know for a fact those same 60% and 40% are coming back, you budget for that.
Right.
But what if it's 80 and 20? Or what if it's, you know, what if it's just a massive increase? You know? We're still one of the fastest growing counties in America. And, Mr. Drake, I still agree with you. I agree with what you're saying. But there's sometimes in government, and I would request that you go through this with a fine-tooth comb, and you, you come up with the most realistic number you can come in, and let's work that into the budget. There may be some things you have to cut on some end to get us to pass that budget. But right now, we have to serve the public. You have to serve the public, and we have to allow you the opportunity to serve the public. I'm not happy about this, and I know it's not your fault, Holly.
Well.
And you know I've always supported you, and I still support you. I wish there was an easy answer to this. There's not. There's an emergency going on right now. You're a 100% increase over the county of what you did last year in uninsured. So there's no way for her to predict that. She went on last year's numbers. She got caught with this order from the governor off budget, and we thought we made up enough. And apparently, it was bigger than you thought. So I'm going to vote for this, and I'm going, as Commissioner Curry and Commissioner Drake both said, let's get this budget budgeted, and let's see what you can, you can do to cut some things to help with this budget. But we can't just say, guys, okay, you should have done better, and we're not going to do it. You're going to have to turn people away. I can't do that. And this is coming from somebody that has absolutely the best insurance in the world. Since I've been on Medicare and with my full and federal Blue Cross Blue Shield that I pay an exorbitant amount for every month. But I don't, I don't get turned down. So I don't, you know, I don't see what you see. But I know it's out there.
Okay. I think there's three others that wanted to speak here, too, and I'd like to say something. I don't disagree with Commissioner Drake either. I do think that we need to have a path moving forward that we are, that we're looking at other options without being subsidized by the taxpayers. I just do. I mean, I understand where you're at right now, and I understand it's no fault of your own. And have you really had 100% increase?
It's percentage of what that population is. So 60% down at the coast, so there's 49 not. But you still have, we had, let me find my percentages here of the, we still had individuals over 100, I think in 20% of the poverty level. We had, also had an increase of, well, it was 771 patients who were living 100% below poverty level, but that, I don't have that out in statistics, just 771 patients that were living 100% below the poverty level. So that's not even including in the uninsured. But some of the things, you know, we have been looking at, we've got individuals that talk to people when they come in there about marketplace insurance. So it's not like we just turn it on loose and saying, okay, but this might be some options for you, but I'm just going to be real with the marketplace insurance. We've got problems with that as well. But people do have a little insurance with that, their copays. You know, we have $15 nominal fee for people. So if they just come in and they're uninsured, they still have to pay $15, but they don't give us $15 right then. They might give us 50 cents or a dollar. You know, so it's a very hard situation.
Right. Right.
And we've been able to make it work for years, but things have really changed in our world.
And maybe they'll be changing a little bit more.
I hope so.
And to be helpful to what you're doing.
Because the last thing I want to do is come to y'all and ask for money.
Absolutely.
I want us to fit right inside that budget like we have for, since I've been here since 2011. This is probably the first time I've actually, that I can remember, you know, having to come.
Yeah.
But Madam Chair?
I think Mr. Curry wanted to speak. Sorry.
We've made decisions up on this board for, and I'm not going to name them off. I think we know what we've spent money on that we probably shouldn't have and all this. But this is healthcare. These are people that possibly no control of their own that need our assistance. You want to call that socialism, call it socialism. But I want the people at the north end of the county, central end of the county, and the south end of the county to have this opportunity for this primary care. When I first moved here, I didn't have a job. I took my kids to her for dental. So I believe in this. I don't disagree with the aspect of Commissioner Drake's business model. In a private industry, I'm right behind him waving the Brad Drake flag on that, totally 100%. But I think this is a little different to where the county can help out when I know we have spent money where we shouldn't have spent, and this is a prime opportunity where we need to spend it. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
The crux of the argument is, what is the mechanism that's going to be used to deter the downward spiral? That's what I'm asking. Everybody says, yeah, let's do it. We got to have it. Our children are the future. Teach them well, let them lead the way. You know the song? Everybody says that. But at some point, everything is not going to be rosy in glory. We have to make a decision. And that's why it's not difficult. It's easy to go along and go along. Then we get out into campaign season, and then we start talking about less government, less taxes, less intervention. And then it changes. When we sit up here at the table, it's not easy telling people no. It is not. I can tell you, I went through it in the legislature, and when the economy tanked, we had to take away services. We had to reduce spending, and it was not a fun exercise whatsoever. And the state has worked continuously, tirelessly, and fiscally prudent for a long, long, long period of time, trying to maintain that level of continuity where we're above water and that we're growing and that we're doing things modestly and in a smart, well-designed and well-thought-out way. And that's how we have to build the laws. But if the walls come tumbling, come tumbling down, we have to make adjustments, and you have to reduce spending. But here's, here's what everybody's losing sight of. At the time that you made the request a year ago, I said, yellow light, yellow light. We have to be mindful that what, what could happen is that we don't have the funds to pay for it. And now here we are, you're telling me we don't have the funds to pay for it. And what I'm asking my colleagues is, is to put a stopgap, is to adopt a philosophy that I think most people want us to adopt in that we have to be fiscally prudent. We can't preach it, we have to walk it. We can't, we have to, we have to, if we're going to talk it, we got to walk it. And that's not easy. And I'm just saying that at some point, I hate it that it's your issue, but yeah, we, I mean, we've spent, we've spent money on infrastructure. I don't know that, I'm curious at what infrastructure that we spent money on that wasn't money that was well-spent. that was well-spent. But I don't know about money in recur, I don't know of recurring monies that we have spent that we're regretful for. And I welcome the opportunity for someone to delineate that particular project. I would like to know what it is. I'm just saying that at some point, we as a board, we have to make, and every decision, because it doesn't stop here. There's somebody that's going to come behind you with a similar argument, and they're going to have, you know, someone that's close to them or someone that's personal to them. They're going to have a story to tell. But at some point, you have to, you have to say, we've got to have solid ground before we can make the additions. And Commissioner Anderson, what you were saying about the governor, the governor permitted that categorical use of, but he didn't instruct us to make that decision. It was authorized if you have the fiscal means to do it. And what I was arguing at the time was, I don't think that this is a prudent step because we're going to have to, we could come back again a year from now, and that's what we're doing.
And there was really a phase two to that, too, Commissioner Drake, that it was supposed to be looked at again the next year, but that somehow fell through. So that was the communication I had gotten. You know, if you're able to do it, we were financially able to do it at that point. And then there was going to be some more communication that there was a possibility that the funding could be coming down the next year. So that's, you know, and I knew I would have some nurses walk, and I couldn't hire anybody else. I mean, it is so difficult. We will have positions out there for months to get hired, and then you've got to have somebody working up, you know, the clinician to get the patient in to see. So it's a domino effect. I don't even know where to start with it. But I appreciate your comments. I do understand what you're saying.
But how do you keep people from walking?
I haven't had anybody leave since they got the increase.
No, I understand that. But if, I'll ask you later.
Okay.
All right. And then we're going to close this up.
I just want to answer one of his questions.
We've already had the comments.
And we're turning it around, but my next comment is, I'm sorry?
We hadn't had public comment yet.
Yes, we did. Randy came up. I did it.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Okay. So the question that Commissioner Drake asked is reoccurring. Since 2019 or 2020, we've had about $1 million in the hole per year on the golf course, and just recently, $300,000, I think, close to it on the first three months of this year with the bar and grill alone in the hole. So we are turning that around, but I'm not sure why it took five or six years to do that. But that's probably a 50/50 in what you're saying. We did, we did sit down, and we did do a plan, and now it's turning around. That's exactly what I said with her with my opening statement was, I don't want her to keep coming back, so let's figure out how to not keep her coming back. That's what I was talking about.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. Thank you very much. Okay. I had public comments early. I did it backwards. My mistake, but I will go ahead and allow it. But from now on, when public comments is closed, it's closed. So come up, Ms. Harris, you can come up. You can come up.
Thank you.
I didn't know you'd gotten so bad about comments.
Name, please.
Suzanne Harris. Brad's right on a lot of this. There are a lot of problems with this budget. I want to know how many people come to this podium for grants. Y'all have this big amount of money for grants. And I think Brad and I and most people in this room would rather see a child be treated for an illness than see us give $2,000 to $3,000 a year to a woman to go to the schools if she goes, or to do whatever she wants to do to train children, how not to get bit by a dog. I think y'all have got a lot of grants that you need to look at. And I've looked at a lot of them. But I think if y'all go through every grant, it's like people coming to the TDC, oh, we need $400,000 for a movie. Oh, great. Are we going to get any ROI for it? No. But one of these commissioners sat up here and said, ROI, we're going to get ROI. Well, I don't know what ROI you're getting on a woman going to school with dogs, but you've got a lot of fat in this budget. And Brad is right. We don't want to turn socialism. Everybody that comes to this podium, that's a ball team, that ever comes up here and wants to go travel somewhere and is asking for money, I always raise my hand and just say, tell me who to write my $500 check to, because I'll give you a check to go travel. Because I don't always think, it's up to the county commissioner for these ball teams, but I want them to be able to travel. I'm willing to donate to Holly. I think it's that important for children. We've got to get communities involved in things like this that can help on things like this. But you need to take a look, every one of you, Brad, you included. Get these grants and look through them and see which grants are we just giving out because we want the people at the podium to like us. So we say, okay, well, here's $400,000. Now, in two years, this grant expires, but we ain't gotten anything from it so far. And in October, it just poof, that contract goes away. So I don't think people need to train their own children how not to get bit by dogs. I think that's probably the contract. I think it said $2,000 a year, but I think then at the bottom, it said we give them $3,000 a year. But I think there's a lot of waste in this county that y'all can suck up. But the children have to have healthcare. If you don't, you're going to run your brand-new hospital out of business, because that hospital can't turn away one person. John Ward's Hospital cannot turn away anybody that is ill. They have to do it for free. And we're going to break the new hospital while we're giving people money to train dogs.
Thank you. Tabitha?
Well, Suzanne took a bunch of my bullet points, because I was thinking the exact same thing. Tabitha Howard, H-O-W-A-R-D. And there's another thing as well that's going to be overloading some things. If the Grand Boulevard Nursing Home Rehabilitation and Health Center.
Can you stay on topic, please?
I am. If they close down because of this new road that we're proposing to put behind them in the hospital, this is about healthcare.
This is about specific healthcare.
I understand that.
This is about the Health Department.
Yes, well, maybe.
On the North End, the North End Health Department.
It's about our overall healthcare in Walton County to begin with, in South Walton.
Tabitha, this is about the North End Health Department and the money that they need to function.
Okay. Well, we're going to dislocate about 100 people out of that nursing home, and.
Tabitha, that's not on topic. If you want to bring that up at the end of the meeting, you can, but that's not on topic right now.
Okay. Well, we do need the Health Department, and they do need the money, yes, because the hospitals are going to be overloaded with a lot of other issues. And give her the money. The children, there's a lot of older people that go to the Health Department, yes. This is crazy not to give them the money, and you do pay for the Bear movies and all this other stuff. Yes, give Holly the money.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It's four to one. Commissioner Drake is a nay. Thank you very much. Okay.
Ms. Holly, if you would hold up just a moment. The next items were requesting to reappoint Ms. Holly Alt as Walton County's representative on the Northwest Florida Health Council. She's there now. That's coming to an end, and we're just asking for a reappointment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. How many years is that for, the approval?
Is it two? Kyle's our CEO, too.
Two years? Okay, okay. Wonderful. Any comments from the board? No? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Holly. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Powell, would you come forward? Madam Chair, the next item is request to accept the first quarter Engineering Department quarterly report.
Yes. Chance Powell, Walton County Engineering. First off, I wanted to say that previous reports, quarterly reports, are on the engineering homepage under the county's homepage, departments. You can find it there. And this one will be there as soon as it's accepted. I did want to mention that also on that website is the Beach Survey. It's available for the public to find. It's some very high-resolution imagery on 69 PDF documents that cover the 26 miles of Walton County Beach. You can find it there and download it. There's a GIS map you can click on, and it'll locate the appropriate map that you're looking for. I'm just going to hit some highlights of the first quarter in the engineering construction projects that we've completed. Obviously, the building department here next door to us, Holiday Shores Phase 1A, pedestrian drainage improvements that's ongoing with Phase 1B is now underway as well. Rock Hill Road widening has been completed. That's Phase 1 of that. Future phases are being applied for with grants through DOT. And then also, the 20th Street sidewalks here in Defuniac are complete. Other design projects that we have ongoing, well, that design project has started in this quarter is obviously the Mag Bayou Sandeston Connector. We're calling it the Sacred Heart Bypass. And other projects under construction started under this quarter is the Mag Bayou Road Pedestrian Improvement Project and Church Street Mall Drive Intersection Simplification there at Highway 98. Just some pointers here. We've got over 60 ongoing design and construction permitting projects underway right now. We've had 76 development orders and plat reviews this quarter, 38 outdoor vents, 90 utility placement permits processed, 168 traffic signal maintenance requests, eight infrastructure grant projects, packages that have been submitted. That includes two scrap, two SCOP, one SIGP, two transportation alternative packages, and one Sun Trail Network project. If you wanted to see more details about that, you can find that on the website tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I know specifically the one on Forest Shore, the sidewalks in there, they're doing a great job. They're working on them today, and it's making a huge difference for safety for the community. So thank you for that and all the other issues that you're dealing with.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Motion to approve the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chance, you want to present the 393 Drainage Improvement Projects?
Yes. Items 25 and 26 are related. Item 25 is request to approve and authorize a chair to sign Task Order Number 2507 with HDR for professional CEI services for the 393 Drainage Improvement Projects. This CEI contract not to exceed $325,299.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Item 26 is the construction of that project, request to approve and authorize, request approved an award invitation to bid 2509 to the lowest, most responsive bidder, Gulf Coast Utility Contractors LLC, in an amount not to exceed $3,505,165.25 for the construction of the county road 393 Drainage Improvement Projects, and approve and authorize a chair to sign the construction contract number 2509.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I just wanted to ask you on that one, some of those funds for that are coming from another area, right?
Yes, we were able to have the grant funds that would have been applied to the foreman property Drainage Improvement Project shifted over there because we were not going to get Army Corps permits on the foreman property before those funds expired.
Wonderful. That's great. I'm glad to see some drainage work going on, so thank you. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, any comments from the board? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the last meeting, the board asked for an update on providing a second cart to those residents in Area B. And Mr. McKee, you want to come on up and give us an update?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Billy McKee, for the record. Yes, we are still working on the process to develop an amendment that's going to incorporate this particular effort from the North End. So in Area B, since they do not receive a second collection, to offset that a little bit, we think that providing that second cart at no charge to the North End residents upon request is probably the best way to go. The board has asked us to come back with that. We are working on that with legal right now. We're going to have to put together a way to keep this separate from the other list. We got three or four lists going right now of, so delivering the initial cart is one process we got going on. The second cart at no charge is another process that we're going to have to initialize once you guys give us the approval to go forward with that. And I think that would be upon the amendment being approved by the board. Clay can probably confirm that.
And that's a fairly accurate statement. And I'll just chime in, board, we are comfortable we have these terms ready with waste management, but there are some additional logistical terms regarding the list, specifically in the North End, about where the carts have been dropped, that we need to go ahead and clean up right now that Mr. McKee has identified. Because of the overlap on these two issues, if we bring you back a simple amendment that just allows us to get the carts and buy them, we're probably giving away the fact that we're buying those for X, when we might need to reduce the number they're charging us over here by an additional amount based on what we're identifying in the list. So we're just making sure we get this done at one time, but we've had positive conversations, and we'll be back. I expect, based on where I'm at, I think we'll see this at your last meeting in May is my intention.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, we are asking them to give us some alternative pricing for smaller-sized carts. So we have the 95-gallon, and these smaller carts you have, we're going to use the word approximate, because I don't want to get stuck on an exact gallon figure. But so there's 35, some of them, it just depends on the manufacturer as to what the gallons are on there, 35 to 65-gallon, which would be, hopefully, they'll be able to give us a reduced amount on those sizes, which that's something we've been talking to them about, and I think they're working on that as well. So right now, that's pretty much the update.
I wanted to kind of highlight the fact that the North End gets one pickup, the South End gets two pickups. So I've had people question why we're giving the North End people a free second can, but it actually works out better and more economical for all of us by giving those that ask for it the second can, because they don't get the second run like we do on the South End. So.
Yeah, different people generate different amounts of garbage based on their household. So the likelihood, I know I don't particularly need a second cart, but I don't think I'll take the opportunity to get one either, but a lot of people will, a lot of people won't. So we don't know exactly how many will request a cart. And the limit on that, we're going to try to do a three-month window of time to request that second cart. That way, we don't have people requesting them, you know, just on out into perpetuity. Right now, there's about 12,000 plus or minus, it's probably more than that really, residential units. And this comes off of the GIS addressing system in the North End outside of the city of Defuniac. And we had to remove the folks that were in District 1, which kind of increased that area for the Area A folks. So the likelihood is not all 12,000. I don't know. I couldn't give you a good guess as to what percentage would actually request a cart. But even if the whole, you know, 12,000 did, it's still, I would say, considerably less expensive than adding a second day of collection in the North End. Particularly over time, it could be very expensive.
Right. Is the deadline to, if you already have a cart, and it's the 95-gallon one, if you already have that and you want something smaller, is the deadline the end of this month?
That's what the contract calls for, so hopefully, folks are calling. Now, I do know there's some problems getting through on that line. I think there, actually, you know, I know we get hundreds of calls at Landfill. So I know waste managers are getting a lot of calls, but as long as they get in and make their request by the end of the month, I think they'll be fine.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to clarify that.
And then after that, there's a $30 charge to swap out the cart according to the contract. So, you know, later on, they could still do it. There may be a charge for it there.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We do need to expedite this, though. This is a big issue for people in the North End, some of them.
Yeah, I've got folks that are.
I mean, we're getting calls every day, so I would appreciate it if we could get this expedited.
We're going to have to work out a way to, probably people that may have already purchased one in the North End, I think the way we can accomplish that is maybe if Waste Management will rebate them that, and then charge us back on the invoice for that cart as we go forward. I don't know. We'll work out the details on that, but I think we would encounter a little bit of headwind if we, if somebody bought one yesterday and we provided them a free one tomorrow.
Well, we know that, yeah.
One other issue I'd like to bring up while you're here, and then I'll, because I have a lot of calls and emails on this, is the bear tops. Is there any way you could put out some information about what their options are with the bear tops? Because some people say that the bears are going to their trash and is making a mess in their neighborhood.
We can, we can try. One thing we found out in this process is it's practically impossible to inform everybody because there are so many different ways people get their information. We have put out information on our website, I believe Waste Management has too, but we can put some more on there. I mean, coming from me right now, it's basically if you have a cart that has a bear lock and you lock it or strap it or whatever it is, it's the responsibility of the owner to unlock it. So, when they come by to pick it up, they're not going to get out and dump it. It's, you know, that defeats the purpose of this process. There are some carts on the market, they are more expensive, but they have a gravity lock, and as that picks it up and dumps it, it actually releases the lock, but folks can get with Waste Management about that and make sure they can service that cart, and, you know, they'll advise them on what they will do, but my understanding is they will service those, but if it's got a lock that has to be done by hand, that's the responsibility of the owner, which a lot of people don't want to have that responsibility, but.
Is there any way to modify the current can that you all have, or that Waste Management has supplied to make it the gravity top?
I don't know about that. I've heard some things about a gravity lock that, you know, that you can put on there, but there's certainly hardware that you can put on one that's not gravity. It just requires the person to go out and unlock it, and they're pretty simple. There are several devices on the market for that. Okaloosa County buys some of them and provides them, I think to, I don't think Waste Management does it, but someone attaches them. They're not that hard to do, so most people that have a little bit of handyman ability can put some screws and a latch on there. But a real determined bear is going to tear into it anyway, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
So, where would you say we are in the rollout? Do you think we've accomplished 50% of the assignment, 75% of the assignment? Are we up in the 80s?
I would say it's above 80. I'm seeing a pretty good distribution. Commissioner, I found out too during this process that if you get off the main roads a little bit in certain sections of the county, there's some folks out there that are struggling, and it's very hard to determine whether or not, what they're living in, and, you know, it's eye-opening, actually. So, you know, we've got, I actually had a gentleman today tell me he lives off-grid, and I had to get him explain that to me. I've seen it on, you know, Alaska and things like that, but apparently he has a place, it's his property, and he has no electricity, and he essentially lives in an off-grid fashion, but he's still a resident, and he's not, it's not homestead or anything like that. But interestingly enough, I said, "Well, I think you deserve a cart. You still generate garbage," so, but it's not on the address list as a collection point, so we'll just add it to it. So, we're having to adjust all that. The numbers are, you know, probably more than what we, our base number was, but we're going to reconcile those, work with Waste Management to kind of reconcile our house numbers with the cart distribution process, because there are some hiccups there, you know, some like places that are clearly not residential units or have gotten carts. Clearly, some of them are being stolen and probably hijacked and taken to another place, so those things are going to have to be worked out, but we are working through that with them. But I would say it's, a high percentage is accomplished at this point.
Okay. Well, that gives me some perspective. Also, is there anybody from Waste Management that's here?
I believe so.
Okay. I just want to emphasize, you don't necessarily have to come up, or maybe you do, I'll let you figure it out, but there seems to be a high volume of people who have concerns with not being able to reach someone with a telephone number. I don't know if it's the telephone number that was mailed out, or if it's one that's being advertised via social media or the internet or whatever. I would just hope that there is a plan in place to have someone that would be able to facilitate those calls, because at the end of the day, if they never get up with someone at Waste Management, then they end up calling our office, or they call Billy's office, and then all we can do is reroute it back. So, I'm hoping that there's a plan to make sure that we do have an operating number that is functional and it's being optimized.
I can give you a little bit, and if Caleb or Doug want to, you know, jump in on there, the local number is a 389-6121, that's the Freeport Office, but I know they're experiencing a high level of calls, and they do come in kind of, you know, it's, you know, big clumps at one time. We'll get some quiet time, and then we get a lot of calls. I don't know if it's sleep patterns or what, but anyway, I'm pretty sure that as, and you spend some time on each call, some of them take some time with a customer. So, those roll over to a call center, and those folks are assisting the local office, and I believe it's located in Mississippi, and this is Waste Management, but, so, they are supposed to be putting them on a list and letting the Waste Management Office locally know. So, between Waste Management's local folks and our GIS Department and our Solid Waste Department, we're putting together a kind of a fluid list that has the callers, and we're trying to, again, this goes back to looking at the situation, because one thing I wanted to bring out, we don't want to be providing carts for, you know, man caves and barns and just a teapot out on the back 40 to put a, you know, well, because each cart, as it's assigned to a resident, the first cart in particular, is a subaccount, so that's a charge to the county. So, in, different from in the past where, you know, for 40 years or however long, if you put a garbage can out, it got collected, and we did not have a subscription type operation going where people had to subscribe with an address, a name, and tie it to a cart to a residence. Logically, you know, it goes to a house, but you would find that there are some circumstances out there that are different, and we're trying to work through those and keep the cost manageable at the same time, and trying to be fair at the same time.
Okay, so, we're going to go through the exercise where we're going to ask on a voluntary basis for the North End residents to ask for a second cart, and you want to put a period of time on that of, say, like, three months, which I understand the rationale. What are we going to do about new residents? So, we have somebody that moves in a year from now, they're not going to be in that three-month window. What would the contingency plan be?
Well, that's a good question. We have thought about it, and honestly, I don't want to make that decision personally, so I would think that it's definitely, you know, if the idea is to provide that second, compensate for that different collection level, it may very well be that we have to offer that to, you know, as homeowners come online going forward.
I'll step in and say that that's part of the overall negotiation, but certainly, we have a total number we're aiming at as the 12,000. We don't expect all those to be, to come online, at least not at once, but it may well be that there is a discussion that can be done with the total amount of carts the county agrees to purchase, and then the ability to deliver those, whether we take them on hand or they do in the future. So, we're, that's what we're really trying to sort out, is what the actual county is versus the number count, and then is there some spread in between those two numbers that could have covered that for at least the foreseeable future? I don't know if we can do it for all five years, short of us just agreeing to buy at cost, but that's something we'll have to budget for, and we'll talk to y'all during the budget time with what that looks like as well.
Okay, and last thing was, in our negotiations, I would like to ask Waste Management, since this was not contemplated in the original contract, we're, we realize that there, that the interest in a second cart was at the level that it is, and so we're committed to match that demand, but I guess the request with Waste Management would be, since this was outside everything else, that as a partnership with Walton County, would they offer those cans at a wholesale cost and not a retail cost?
I can, I think I can answer part of that. They have offered to discount the cart. The current charge for a new cart is $130, I think, plus tax. They've agreed to provide the cart with a reduction to $115 per cart for the 95 gallon for this particular exercise, so that's what they offer.
And there are some other dollar elements being negotiated as part of some other elements of the contract that, probably easier not to go into now, but there are some additional negotiations about the total house count. Effective, this is a gross rate contract where you have X number of houses times the rate charged, and that's what they've committed to. Now, if that number is a little variable based on how much they're actually going to pick up, that's something we're working through with it.
Thank you. Is that it? Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. I know it's been interesting. Thank you. Okay. Facilities maintenance?
I don't know what Billy's going to do after we get through this thing.
Go fishing.
Commissioners, the next two items are companion items. They are items 28 and 29. The first is, I'm going to talk about both of them collectively, and then I'll ask for individual motions. Both of these items have to do with the design and the construction of the Glendale Fire Station. Item 28 is request to approve and authorize the chair to sign Change Order Number 2 to Contract Number ADM 2202 with Dewberry for Glendale Fire Station, and to decrease the contract amount by $102,816.30. As we have been working with Dewberry, who has designed this project, and then Gage Golden, who's responsible and contracted to construct the project, we've encountered some design modification needs, particularly with the stormwater infrastructure and the grading plans, and we got everybody together, and the way that we decided to address this would be to decrease, well, let me back up. The plans provided by Dewberry required modification. Those modifications are going to increase the construction cost by $102,816.30. Dewberry has agreed to take care of their charges, but instead of one contractor paying the other, we've decided to approach this by decreasing the contract with Dewberry by $102,000, and then increasing the construction contract with Gage Golden by that same amount. So, first request would be to approve the change order with Dewberry for that amount.
So, we're basically a pass-through for that, for those funds?
We are acting as a pass-through, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve number 28. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item would be to increase the Contract Number 2429 with Gage Golden Construction LLC doing business as BGN Contractors by $102,816.30, and they've also requested a 120-day extension to complete this extra work.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is number 30. That's a request to award invitation to bid 2507 for the Kellogg Park Nature Center Project to H&amp;T Contractors LLC, and request to approve and authorize the chair to sign that contract, 2507, for the amount of $995,833.98. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Brian, would you mind coming up and telling us about this park? I understand it's very, very nice. Hello.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate your time today. Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. This is the Kellogg Park. It's a 10-acre piece of land that was conveyed to the county about 18 years ago. It had some terms and conditions for build-out. We completed a portion of it at the time of conveyance, another portion a little bit later, and then they gave us some relief on the actual Nature Center building. When I got onboard here, we got it back into play, had a few years in the budget, got scrubbed, and finally got it to stick, and we've now completed design and permitting. It's an 1,800-square-foot facility. It's a community center with a Nature Center-type flair, and it'll be very similar to Paget Park. We designed it so that the bathrooms can be accessible during the day from the outside without having to go through the inside of the building, and the building will be open for rent, just like we have Paget Park. It's also some trails that we've already built. We'll also be adding some, what we call rest area pavilions within that trail system, and all that connects to the bayside portion of the park.
Where is it located?
It's at the end of Nellie Drive, where Nellie meets Indian Woman Road, just north of Chat Holly.
Okay. Wonderful.
So, it's a nice park, it'd be a nice addition to the inventory for the county, and people of that community already utilize the bayside portion of it a lot, and this will give opportunity for people that want to meet. There were some terms in the conveyance that it'd be available to the local chapter of the Audubon Society, and we've kept in touch with those. Two members of the Kellogg family will be at our groundbreaking on June 11th, and we'll have a nice event. We're putting together some of the documentation and pictures that were conveyed to us when the property was conveyed, so. The best thing about it is it completes the conveyance terms, and everybody's happy.
That's wonderful, and it's a nice, good-sized building, and you said the people will be able to rent it, and?
Yes, ma'am. So, Paget Park is part of the Parks and Recreation Department. We'll treat it the same way, and we haven't decided who will be in control of it. I have no opinion on that, but yeah, it'll be open. It's an open floor plan, it's got a small dinette or dinette in it, so you can prepare food, have a refrigerator. Bathrooms will be access-controlled, so that we can close them at a certain time of the day and open in the morning, but also they're open during the day, so that people that are using the park will have a place to go to the bathroom.
Fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you very much. Okay, Melissa?
Commissioners, our next item is a request approval, a request for approval to advertise and hold the fiscal year '26 tentative budget hearing on September 8th at 501 in South Walton, and the final budget hearing on September 22nd at 501 in Defuneac Springs. We have checked with the school district, they get first choice of dates, they have set their hearing dates, so now we are requesting that the board set the county's hearing dates, and after those are set, then we can let the other taxing districts know so they can pick their dates.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve to have the fiscal year '26 tentative budget hearing on September 8th at 501 in South Walton, and September 22nd at 501 in Defuneac Springs. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, our next item is, I was just going to give you a very brief budget update, and it's also a request to advertise our budget workshops. I do want to go ahead and mention that this update does not cover TDT. TDT is down about 8%. We will continue to look at that. The TDC Council had, I watched their meeting, and they were wanting to hold a budget workshop, so we'll be working with them, we'll be working with Mr. Kellenberger and Mr. Algren on that budget, but that is separate from what I'm going over today. What I wanted to go over with you today is the four funds that impact, are impacted by property taxes and the small county surtax and the solid waste fund. So, what I'm going to tell you today is going to impact general fund, county transportation fund, fine and forfeiture fund, and the solid waste fund. So, just to roll through, I've got a few slides that were attached to the agenda item, and I want to go over our unassigned fund balance. Our unassigned fund balance at the end of fiscal year '24 was a little over $41 million. Our unassigned fund balance now, or at the end of fiscal year '23 was $41 million, at the end of '24, it's a little over $50 million. So, we had almost a $9 million increase in unassigned fund balance, so we ended the year better than we anticipated. GFPA recommends a minimum unassigned general fund balance at two months of expenses or 17%. Right now, we're at 26.5%, so we have a very healthy fund balance. Our revenues for fiscal year '24, those also. Our revenues for fiscal year '24, those also, we ended the year well with those. Ad velorem collections over budget were a little bit over $2 million, which is something that we normally see. We budget 95% of collections by statute. I think we've got a technical difficulty. I'll try to keep this brief. We budget 95% of revenues by statute, and we collect 97%. So we typically will always have a little bit extra there. Other revenues ended up better than we thought they would. We were budgeting decreases that we really, if they did decrease, they didn't decrease as much as we saw. So we did see revenues over budget for our state revenue sharing proceeds, the local government half-sent sales tax proceeds, and in our constitutional office budget surplus. Our fiscal year '25 numbers actually look good. You normally see the sales taxes corresponding to the TDT taxes. That's not what we're seeing this year. We're seeing about a 4% increase in the small county surtax and the BCC distribution. So where TDT has declined, the sales taxes have actually increased. The gas taxes are fairly flat, but the gas taxes based on countywide sales are up. The gas taxes based on a formula of statewide sales are a little down. So we're actually, you know, we try to be conservative, and we are seeing, I'm happy with the revenues this year. We're seeing still some increases. I'm going to skip over some of this, since you cannot see what I'm talking about. For the budget, we want to just kind of focus on, you know, we continue to see costs rising, but not like we were seeing in past years, especially not with COVID. We want to focus on infrastructure and maintaining service and staffing levels. We still want to look for grant opportunities, and we want to adopt a structurally balanced budget. I do want to mention one thing that we have seen. We've received the, we've received all of the departmental budget requests. We are currently going through those. We are going to start going through the constitutional office budget requests. We are seeing the sheriff, you know, he has a big piece. We're seeing him at a flat budget for next year. He had funding that was budgeted for that Triumph match last year that he does not need in the coming year. So that has allowed him to submit a flat budget. Looking at the timeline for the budget, June 1st, we get an estimate of the total assessed value. July 1st starts our clock. We are requesting that the board allow us to advertise and hold two budget workshops from 10:00 a.m. until noon on July 8th in Defuniac Springs prior to the board meeting and July 22nd in South Walton prior to the board meeting. And then our next item will be to hold a staff budget, public budget workshop at 5:00 p.m. on August 4th, and that will get us into the tentative and final budget hearings.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is that just for item 32?
That's just item 32 for the budget workshops.
Okay. Okay. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that means that we will have July 8th of this year and at 10:00 a.m. until noon and July 22nd. That one, the date will be in Defuniac and the July 22nd in South Walton. So thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. And I want to say too, thank you for all the hard work that you do putting into this, because, I mean, you keep us straight, and we really appreciate it, you and Devin and your team. So thank you very much. You've got a good team, yes. Thank you.
And commissioners, our next item is request to advertise and hold a staff budget workshop at 5:00 p.m. on August 4th in the Freeport Annex Boardroom. We did this last year. It was the first year we had done it. We had about a dozen individuals. We'd like to keep expanding on that, and we hope that that keeps growing and we get more public input.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, okay. August 4th, 2025, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you repeat those dates? I didn't get them all written down.
We have got the tentative budget hearing on September 8th at 501 in South Walton. The final budget hearing, September 22nd at 501 in Defuniac Springs. The budget workshops on July 8th at 10 o'clock in Defuniac and July 22nd in South Walton, and a staff public budget workshop on August 4th.
At 5:00 p.m.
At 5:00 p.m., yes ma'am.
Thank you.
And commissioners, my next item is very brief. I was just going to give you an update on EOG DOGE. We did get the portal. We got access to that. They, DOGE made a request for all the contracts you've approved for the last couple of years, all of the job descriptions and employee data, hours worked data. They made, it was quite a large inquiry, quite a large request. It was any grants that the board has given or received. So all of that documentation has been uploaded, and we went ahead and followed up with them to make sure that if we did not give them something that they would like to see, that they know to request it, and we will be happy to provide it. But that is, that's my update. That's the last that I have heard from EOG DOGE.
Did they give you, you may have said it and I missed it, but did they give you a timeframe when they expect to give anything back to us based on their reviews?
The initial letter said June 30th, but I have not heard anything else.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any comments? Okay, thank you very much, Melissa. Appreciate it. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you. First item I have on your agenda is item 35, as a request to consider the award or to otherwise reject and re-advertise for bids regarding the 1.67-acre parcel the board previously approved for advertising in the Mossy Head Industrial Park. We did complete sealed bids as required by Florida statute in a newspaper of general publication, which you have in your packet. We received one sealed bid. That is one total. We didn't receive three or four late or anything. We got one. And that one bid was for a total of $65,000 for the 1.67 acres. Their executive summary and proposal is in the packet. I just need the board's direction.
Motion to accept the award and proceed with the sale.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Go ahead.
Is Uriah here?
He was.
Yes. I just want to talk a little bit about selling a piece of property and leasing a piece of property and what would be the best benefits for the county currently and forward. And I think we've talked several times about that, Uriah. I just want to get your thoughts on the record.
We have. Thank you. Uriah Matthews, for the record, U-R-I-A-H, Matthews, two Ts. Through my time at the EDA, we've sort of talked about how do we do industrial development in the community and how do we maximize the good for the public? And I'm very proud to see that this bid has come in twice the amount of what we have previously sold property at, but there is great conversation to have around leasing county-owned properties for the purpose of economic development. Today, properties that are unproductive yield really no tax benefits, no jobs, et cetera. And the idea of leasing comes to mind because it offers us the ability to retain control and manage and make sure that opportunities come to fruition. And it also offers us the ability to always have, you know, a second at bat, so to say. So if we, in the past, we have sold property, for example, that did not result in the intended, you know, sale. So we sold property and it didn't, it did not come to fruition in the way that we would have expected to or the way that it was sold to us. If we do that lease idea and that project falls through, we get to go back to the drawing board and have a second at bat. So I do believe there is room for leasing in the future. And at our EDA level, as you well know, we're actively discussing that. I've got a memo that I'm going to send out to our board at some point regarding what that could look like, should we pursue more opportunity at our Woodlawn site, for example, entertain the idea of leasing there as well.
Isn't this the last piece of property in Mossy Head?
Just about, yeah. There might be argument that you could squeeze out some more acreage just on the other side of the railroad tracks there, but that's when you start getting into what I would, I think the railroad track and the road are sort of the delineator of the industrial park. So if we all agree that to be the case, this would be the last piece of property in the industrial park.
And do you know who's wanting to buy this?
Yes. So if you recall, I came before the Board of County Commissioners a few weeks ago, and the gentleman who has made the bid is actually here. This is an EDA-sponsored project, in the sense that this project has come before the EDA, asked for support on the project, and allowed me to advocate on their behalf as well. And that's sort of how we ended up here, where I asked for a solicitation. Per the instructions, they responded, and we are here now.
Does it have a military component?
It is. The applicant is happy to speak on this. They have a small defense firm. They are locals, and they currently presently serve the mission today and are looking to expand upon that. And I can't get into really the details of what they do, but it's cool stuff. So they are also working in just our, you know, our stewardship of economic development. I've also made some connections for them into other defense contractors in the community, and we're hoping some more lightning in a bottle happens as well with those relationships.
That'd be great. Yeah, if he doesn't mind, or she, coming up and speaking to it.
Mr. De La Rosa is here. I'll introduce Mr. Greg De La Rosa, and I'll let him space that out and spell it for you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Good afternoon. Greg De La Rosa with Tourist Technologies.
Well, you spelled that last name wrong.
De La Rosa, D-E-L-A-R-O-S-A.
What did you say the name of the company was?
Tourist Technologies.
Okay. Okay. So you, are you, is this your first time at something like this, at least in this area?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it is. And I previously worked with the government on active duty as a reservist and civil service for 25 years. I left civil service last year, coming up on a year. Started the company. We're currently doing full-time support services for the 96 Test Wing, and I'm looking for a location where I can expand into actually creating the technologies in the name rather than just providing support services.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for your service.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No? Okay. Any questions from the audience? Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you very much. Motion passes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, item 36 is a revisit of something you've had before, which is the letter of credit on North Walton Doctors Hospital. Jason, if we can click on the one called the Guarantee Agreement. The board previously approved the language for the actual guarantee itself. The bank sent back over some additional documents that incorporated the language this board approved, and certainly that was what we intended. Unfortunately, it also included a number of new paragraphs. As you'll see, this goes on down, two, three, four, five, some of which were standard boilerplate, some of which materially altered the terms of what the board approved. The bank and I have gone back and forth, sorting that. I don't want to be very clear. This is a lender discussion to us. It's not an alteration of anything we had discussed with the hospital itself. The version presented before you has been reviewed by myself and staff, as Thomas and I have talked about it. Outside of the one potential issue that they call for payment within five days, I feel comfortable the wording of "be" under "for," should we be demanded to pay, provides a sufficient remedy, because all they get to do if we don't pay within five days is file a lawsuit and seek all their other remedies, which if we're at that point in time, we'll have them a check before they can ever get through the court system to even have us file an answer. So I'm not worried about it from within five. We will acknowledge. If we're due to pay, we're due to pay. But I approve this document as deformed, but because it has additional language and is not the identical version you approved, I'm required to bring this back and advise you of that at a board meeting. So I am asking for a motion to approve the Guarantee Agreement presented and attached, titled Guarantee Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
I'm not opposed to this at all. I think we need a hospital here. I'm just curious why we had the long discussion over socialist health care that we just had a few minutes ago, and now this is fine. Are we classing people out? Is that what we voted for you for? It depends on the class of people that you are. What's the difference here? How is this not socialism, the same as law and the health department money? You don't have to answer, but if you choose to answer after I sit down, I will be back.
What we've chosen to do is we've chosen to partner with...
Does Walton County have to pay this money back if no one else does?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all we need to know. We don't need a bunch of air. That's all we need to know. So explain the difference. Explain the difference. Yep. All right, well, I'm going to go sit down. If you choose to explain it after I sit down, I'll be right back.
Okay.
You for a vote.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is item 37. I'm hereby advising you pursuant to Florida statute 286.011 sub 8 that I'm in need of the board's advice concerning litigation strategy and the type of expenses to be incurred in Florida TP LLC at All versus Walton County, a Walton County Circuit Court case 22 CA 511. And I'm asking you to give me authority to approve and schedule and advertise a special meeting to hold said executive session, so that we can meet and discuss those matters. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
That's all I have, and we have no public hearings today, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can we take a short break?
Yes, we can. I will take a 10-minute break. I will take a 10-minute break.[376.87]
And now, if everyone would please take your seats. The next item up is Vice Chair Dan Currie has a few items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can everybody hear me? I just wanted to get an, I'm doing something for the budget talks and this is kind of, kind of seeping into that and I'm not going to really want to talk about the budget aspect of this if I don't have to, but I just want to make sure that each department, what they're requesting for presently and past are, you know, it's being publicized, they're working on it, and this is where I had my questions because I got a, I had asked.
Madam Chair, are we going to wait him?
He's right there on the phone.
Okay.
He's not asking for any.
I'm not asking for motion or direction. So I have requested, I don't know, several weeks back, I just, and for whatever reason, I picked engineering, sorry Chance, but I wanted to know how many current employees we have. I wanted to know the, just an exercise that I did in the private sector that I wanted to try and focus on here, especially with budgets coming. So I want to know how many employees that we actually had and what their duties are, any job descriptions and everything of that sort. So I got an email back from HR and it says, "Here are the requested details for positions currently within the engineering department and their corresponding job descriptions. Please note there are two positions, capital improvements and work program engineer and long range infrastructure program engineer that I could not locate job descriptions for." So I'm going, okay. So I had to, it seemed like every question I asked, I had more questions. So I dug a little deeper and those aren't, those are like $130,000 jobs. So I would assume we might need to find those job descriptions. But then I get into and I asked Melissa, how many do we have? And she said, "I think we have more than 12, but I think where it comes up to last year, they requested 17. We only have 12." So, and then they're going to be asking for an additional one next year, so that's 18. We only have on the Walton County vacant positions sheet, three. So that's where I want to make sure that if engineering needs three more folks in that office, why aren't we advertising them? Why aren't we getting ahead of the game instead of waiting? Because we've already funded those five positions last year. So I had asked Melissa, does that roll over? And she's like, "No, it just stays in there until they," I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, it stays in there until they hire the folks that amount. Okay. So those are just my ques, and that's just one department, and I got other, not issues, but concerns with the processes of engineering, and that's going to be discussed at workshops. But that's what, and if you want to come up and, that's fine. I just want to make sure, because we hear, we've heard a lot about, you know, some departments needing some folks and they're either, they are approved, not approved, not out there, and that's why I requested this sheet and then you, and you sent it to me. Thank you, thank you very much.
Sir, absolutely.
But I guess my question is maybe with engineering, do we, are we going to actively search for the next three positions that they're wanting? Or where are we at?
Would you state your name first, please?
Yeah, Terry Franksman with Human Resources.
And thank you, Terry.
Yeah, absolutely. So what we've been doing, HR has been working with Melissa's group and with Devon to meet with each department and kind of match our FTEs with their FTEs. We're both running on two different systems, so the first thing I wanted to do was to make sure every position we have also matches the position over with budget. So we did that, going through pretty much all the departments. Couple of them were a little more difficult than others, Public Works, large department, engineering, they've had some changes within that department over the past couple of years. So with engineering, they have seven, 17 positions that are budgeted positions. There are five that are currently vacant. Out of those five, we've advertised three, just hired somebody this week for one of their positions. The two vacant positions are really dependent on filling some of the other positions. And the deputy county engineer right now is currently inactive, and I believe that's going to be discussions for part of the budget in terms of either a potential name change or some adjustments with the requirements. And then with the staff engineer two, they're also looking at making some changes with that, which will be part of the 25, 26 budget, right, 25, 26 budget plans.
So the staff engineer two, I don't see that on the 12 positions that your office sent me.
And that is actually a civil engineer and they're looking at re, I'm sorry, they're looking at possibly making a title change and making that into a staff engineer two. Because instead of being narrowed down, it'll be broad and they can handle everything within the county instead of particular projects. So they're looking, making some changes on that.
And then as we're going through this, we're going to eyeball or set some goals on these to make sure each position has a job description?
Absolutely.
Because the two positions that she sent me, one makes $138,000 and one makes $124,000.
Yes.
So I mean, those are, we need some direction on that kind of salary.
100%.
We need direction on all salaries, but.
And we know we're moving forward on that. We work directly with the subject matter experts to put those descriptions together for us. We go back, verify qualifications, minimal requirements, and we're both working together to get a good product.
And I just think this exercise will be good to go through each, that's just my opinion. It would be good to go through all the departments, to be honest, whether if you're going through this one, I mean, I'd go ahead and expand it with the next one. Technically, I was just trying to do, put something together for budget, budget talks at the workshop, and this just kind of caught my eye and then each question I asked, and then when your office sent me, well, we only have a 12, and listen, no, I think we got 17. And I'm like, well, wait a minute, what do we got?
Yeah, we do have, but a lot of times those positions, until we work with the departments, we don't get those descriptions until they say, hey, we're ready to go and let's put them together. Now, they've been established before, we're going to have them, but unfortunately in these, I don't know what happened to those or where they were.
Okay.
But Chance is working with us on updating all of those.
That's fine, I just, this isn't a point in the finger, I just want to get it fixed. I just want to get it fixed. I mean, if I discover it and I don't say anything, then it's shame on me.
Yeah.
So if I do discover something, that's why I've sent the email to Stan, Melissa, you know, everybody involved, so we could get this fixed. And like I said, I think it's a good exercise to go through the rest of the departments while we're doing this.
Yeah, and along with that too, you know, we have reached out to each department, look at what you've got for vacancies, follow up with this, let us know what we can do. And that's pretty much every aspect from advertising to working on job descriptions and also the DOGE requirements also. I want to make sure if we've got positions that have been out there for two years and haven't been filled, why?
Gotcha.
So those are things, I'm kind of doing the same thing you are, and scrubbing every department, finding out why they're sitting out there, what we can do to help them get them filled. We're also reaching out to a lot of different organizations, going to the colleges to make sure, and we kind of missed the boat in terms of school being out, but we're trying to advertise to the engineering departments of the major schools in the area. We're looking at Herbert, Eglin, Troy, you name it, just to try and look at other sources to get advertisement and get candidates in for us.
And I like, and I like the sheet too, if there was any way that, you know, you could possibly update the rest of the commissioners, maybe monthly or something like that with the sheet, with the dispositions thereof, I mean, the descriptions in there, that was perfect. I liked the sheet. So that helped me figure out, you know, the positions that I'm like, well, wait a minute, we're missing three, you know, so thank you.
And when we did that in SO Scrub Two, that's why I looked, mine were a little different than the other departments was. So that's why we did the scrub and going through everything to make sure apples and apples.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and make sure that if Chance needs three more people, we're going to go ahead and advertise them currently, because we already budgeted for it in '24.
Absolutely.
And that money's there waiting for us to hire, correct?
Waiting to be spent.
So, I mean, I just don't want to keep carrying it over, leaving that money over there and it not doing anything.
Yes.
So, and if Chance needs the people, by all means, get a rider.
Right there to do it, yes, sir.
Yeah, alright. Thank you, sir.
I have a question though. I think you mentioned this, you both work from two different systems, is that right? So, because I know when I first came on board too, there were, there were conflicts as far as, you may have had more on your list and HR had less, so that's been an ongoing issue.
They don't talk to each other, so we're going to do annually or biannally reviews, my whole team, whatever, and sat with her team, and we went through position by position all the way through.
Wonderful.
We're doing that at least twice a year.
That's great.
And Commissioner, that will get you, your list that Mr. Franksman's group has produced, you'll get it a lot faster.
Okay, okay, that's great. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a comment. Well, I have a question first. I'm trying to understand what it is that needs to be fixed.
Well, going by what is out there, I mean, we had five positions open all of last year and we had money budgeted for it. I look at the sheet and we only see three on there, so my question is, where's the other three or where's the other two? Are we still going to do that? And then also, if this is this way in this department, I'm curious to see if this is this way in other departments. So I want to fix it by, if the directors don't need those folks, then let's get them off the list and put that money back in general fund, or if they do need them, then let's get them hired, let's get it published, let's get it on this sheet, and it's not on this sheet.
I just want to make sure that fundamentally, we're not creating an environment to where we just want to spend the money just because it was budgeted. I think it's more prudent if during the budget exercise, if the departments say, hey, I need 13 employees, I need 22 employees, I need seven employees, I need whatever, and if through their management structure, they're able to become more.
Efficient with what they got, I got you.
Yes, but I don't want this to turn into just because it's advertised, we need to race out there and spend the money. If we don't need to put that online, why wouldn't we?
I don't disagree, and that's probably part of the question, that's why I asked. If we, if we need them, great, put them on there. If we don't need them, take it off and put that money back in general fund. That's exactly what I said.
And Commissioner, that is one of the exercises that we will do during the budget scrubs with county administration. We'll sit down with Mr. Franksman, with Mr. Sunday, and we'll discuss each of these, and we do look at, do you have any vacancies? Why do you not have it filled? If you don't have it filled, can we cut it? We do that exercise department by department.
Perfect.
Yeah, I do think that there are probably some positions that we do need that are not filled, for whatever reason.
Absolutely.
I do think there's some of those, but.
Thank you, thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. Next item, Madam Chair, once Mr. Atkinson explains my item 39 with the Senate Bill, 1622, along with the amendment, I do have at least one comment afterwards that I would like to be the first. There's a lot of information out there on both sides of the fence on this. I want to know where Walton County stands with the bill as is, with the amendment, with everything. Mr. Atkinson stated as such at the TDC meeting and the EDA meeting in great detail, and I've asked him to do the same here. So I think this is a broader audience, so I just want to get the word out. I don't want anything happening on day one, and we were thinking that it's free rain on the beaches, we can tell the security guards to go away, we can pick up signs, and, you know, I'm hearing all kinds of stuff on social media, so that's why I wanted Mr. Atkinson to explain it.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. So to directly answer your question, what happens day one after the governor signs this bill? The simple answer is legally, nothing changes on the Walton County beaches. The Walton County customary use case was scheduled for trial in the summer of 2023. Had that case gone all the way through trial, those judgments would have been entered, case would have been over. As it was, certain parts of the case were settled, certain parts of the case were dismissed, and then certain parts were ultimately tried through summary judgment proceedings with judgments entered late January, early February of 2024. The legislature has repealed a prior bill it passed, but the legislature does not undo the legal significance of that case. So it's very important to recognize that this bill has a profound effect on any city or county in the state of Florida for which customary use litigation has not already occurred, but for Walton County, ours has. And so what happens day one? Nothing. Nothing changes. What is, the status on our beaches is effectively the exact same as it was day zero, day negative one, going back in time. That being said, the bill does have an immeasurable impact and opens the door towards what this board has already discussed its ultimate intentions were. When this board and the predecessors, some were here, some weren't, when this was discussed, it was never a situation of what happens in this specific case, it's what happens the day after customary use, much like you're asking what happens the day after this bill. This board's direction was to look at having as much of a uniform set of public use rights on our beach as possible. We broadly have that in Marimar Beach, from Topsail to the county line going to O'Callusa. That's because there's an erosion control line that was established following a beach restoration or more specifically, a beach renourishment project. When that ECL is established by state law, all lands lying seaward of that ECL inure to the benefit of the state and inure to the state in the benefit of the public. And that case has been litigated, it's gone all the way to the United States Supreme Court for Walton County and Florida DEP. Walton County and Florida DEP prevailed. We know that. Broadly, we do not have the issues, although we do occasionally have issues, in that part of the county, Marimar Beach, that we do elsewhere. So we heard a question earlier, and I'll just touch on that briefly now. The public has the right to be seaward of that ECL. And does that give you the right to go down there and break the law? Does that give you the right to go down there and fight, do illegal activities, be obnoxious or otherwise affect the rights or the use and the enjoyment of the lands of the private property owner or other persons on the beach? Absolutely, of course not. The state of Florida is not going to say that either. But you do have a right to be seaward of that ECL, and to the extent that there are any efforts, I put in writing, and I've spoken to multiple commissioners about this since this issue's come up, Walton County does not generally allow vending seaward of the ECL. In fact, our permits this year that people put forward specifically say on the application, the permit you're applying for does not give you the right to vend seaward of the ECL. At this point in time, we do not have any site-specific permit that we have identified that have been issued since the February permear renewals that gives anybody the right to vend seaward of the ECL. So to the extent a vendor is acting to remove the public just in general, as opposed to for a specific reason or specific legal grounds from lands seaward of the ECL, they're out of bounds. And I don't know how to be any more plain than that, that is not something the county is authorizing. And the county requires by ordinance, express written permission be granted to anyone to vend seaward of the ECL. Now, I want to be clear, we have areas in this county and we can probably find all the exceptions, and I don't want to spend the day going through all of the exceptions on that topic, where we have license agreements where people have conveyed us the right to have the public use their beach in large stretches of beach, and we've negotiated these terms, then certainly we've given broader vending rights and broader rights than just a standard vendor would get. None of that applies to the areas we've had complaints in. So to directly answer Ms. Howard's question, the county does not and has not conveyed any authority to any vendor to preclude the public from being seaward of the ECL, to block the public's access seaward of the ECL. That is absolutely outside the scopes of our permits that we've issued and is not something we condone. So what did the bill do relative to the ECL? What the bill did is it recognized Walton County as a critically eroded county on our shoreline. It recognized more importantly that the state has now officially taken the position that the state of Florida does not now require the inclusion of a public dedication or a public easement as part of any restoration project on the beach. Now, that's going to still be something we have to work with, with the Army Corps of Engineers and DEP, but it's very well known that the county has over $60 million allocated from one of our beach, from our beach renourishment penny, one of the TDT pennies. There's over $60 million of federal funds allocated to match that for our hurricane storm damage reduction plan. Additionally, I don't think it is any secret anymore that circa 2019, in the wake of Hurricane Michael, excess money was allocated to this region for beach renourishment, and Bay County did not use all of their dollars, and the opportunity was presented to Walton County to receive over $120 million, not just do the HSDR to put more sand on the beach and actually create more beach. That never got voted on by the Board of County Commissioners, from what I can tell, it was never presented to the Board of County Commissioners, and unfortunately, it was turned down and that money went elsewhere. So where we are now is a position that this board's prior direction to staff and that we've continued to work on at this board's guidance and direction has been to continue moving forward on our hurricane storm damage reduction plan and any and all beach restoration and beach renourishment opportunities under the very simple concept that if there is not a beach to use, because it goes away in a storm, there's necessarily going to be no public use rights. But the more public, the more beach there is, especially with an ECL, all those lands seaward create more public use rights. So what this bill does, for Walton County specifically, is creates a path for us to work towards renourishment, restoration and similar terms that would establish an ECL, hopefully county line to county line, so that we can make use of those federal monies before they expire, and that we can do so without the hurdles that previously blocked this type of project from happening back in 2016. So those are the broad outcomes of where we are. What I would say is, this for us is not the first step in re-establishing and restoring public use rights across more of our beaches. We've already taken those first steps, but this is a huge assist from our legislative delegation and the Florida legislature to help us with that. So I hope that clarifies that, I hope that goes through enough of the ECL questions that were asked earlier, but certainly I open the floor to any questions from the board.
What I, what I was going to say is that if we could, because I know a lot of you probably want to speak to this, if we could let Commissioner Currie finish up with his last item and then we'll open it to public comments so that you can speak to this, because his last item, I think, is pretty short.
Yep, it is.
Very quick, so, okay.
I have a question about this.
Well, I wanted, I wanted to finish with this and then she said that we would do it.
Yes.
I thought you were moving to the next one.
Oh, no, 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 sir, no, sir, no, sir. So it seems like the ECL is the, I don't know, the item in question. I had, I'm going to call you out, Tony, but he said that there is an app, when you stand out there, that can kind of put you in that proximity, but there was a disclaimer, and correct me if I'm wrong, if Tony's in here, that it said that it's plus or minus 15 feet from where you're standing. So they have a hard time with where the line is, so they can, you know, tell folks where the line is, basically. So I would like to, and I'm going to do it, I don't know if the other commissioners want to do it, I talked to Chief Row, or Aldi Row, and I would like to go down to the beach and have some folks show me where the ECL line is. I'd like to pick four or five locations and just go down there as a tourist coming down there, I think you would want to know where you're not supposed to be and where you're supposed to be, because we have, we have security guards, we have vendors, we have everybody telling us where we're not supposed to be and where we're supposed to be, but in fact, is that true? Because we don't have any concrete way of stating, and I don't see the spray paint out there, I don't see any flags, there is nothing to direct you to an ECL line except for an app that says plus or minus 15 feet.
So let me, let me touch on a couple points there, Commissioner, because I think we can address every bit of that.
Okay.
First and foremost, the app does have a margin of error, we've always known that, that's true with any geolocation app, any Google Maps, wherever you put your location, it's going to only be good within so many feet. For the better part, and I don't know exactly how long we've had that app, but we've had that ECL there for enough years now to actually have established a pattern, the approach that has been taken historically has been, we're going to operate and we're going to give everybody a little leeway. I mean, if you're a little bit on one side of that line, we're not going to go down there and cause a great deal of problem. But if a person has set up all of their vending chairs and it's clear there's an entire line of them, and it's a pretty good clip south of that ECL, and they're taking up public lands, they're running the public cough, we're going to make them show us they have a right to be there, because our app says, no, you're on the other side of that line. And that's worked very well. The owners down there that have great surveys, the owners that have had to live with an ECL on Marimar Beach have been very diligent about that. I can count very few examples of where we have had to fight with owners about the exact location of the ECL, because everyone has relatively understood what that is. The better news of it is, we did just go through a very detailed survey process, we are actively uploading the survey data that was obtained through that process, county line to county line, that included Marimar Beach, to get this into a GIS data set that is then being converted to TDC mapping and is then going to be also uploaded to provide us a better data set and location to the maps that Code's using. I can tell you, we've talked with the Sheriff's Department about this when they were entering the Beach Ambassador Program. Now, can I say it's going to be any better than plus or minus 15 feet? I'm not a software engineer, so no, I can't tell you that, but what I can promise you is this, we asked our team to do something that had never been done on a mean high water line survey alone before. We asked them to provide parcel level identifications, starting at, let's just take 38. 38 coming south, well, how many feet from the right of way of 38 is a lot line run? Will we now have that marked? Where from, based on the structure, how far down does the boardwalk go? Is there a permanent structure on the beach? Where does that stop? Now, where is that relative to our 20 foot? And I'll go ahead and say it, because I get calls on this probably more than even the ECL issue right now, on those surveys, everybody's looked, there's a line that says EMS easement. Now, we didn't say put the word easement on there to be candid, but I think everybody understands we want to keep the top 20 feet clear for the sheriff's office and fire safety to drive on. Is it a recorded easement? And it's not. But again, I'll say for the benefit of our first responders, our fire safety and law enforcement, if you've got to respond to an emergency on the beach, you drive where you've got to drive, and yes, we want that kept clear for you, and if a private owner says, "We're not going to let you cross our property," then we'll see him in court, because that one's one we welcome the opportunity to defend.
So there's no definitive way for an ECL, like if I went down to Sandeston right now, that I'm on the beach, there's no way that I can, where's that line at?
Well, we can give you that now, but based on the new survey, because we have more data points such as where a boardwalk stops, and we can now measure more footage, we can dial that number in. The idea is we want to shrink that 15 foot to get it almost as exact as possible. The other thing is this, that ECL was established well over a decade ago, we're getting back almost 20 years ago now. What we're doing now by having more data points. What we're doing now by having more data points on these surveys and what we've already talked to the Army Corps of Engineers about is the ECL that will be established as part of any future project is going to have a higher level of definition attached to it than what was previous. A lot's changed in the last 17 or 18 years. So can we get you a pretty good, solid idea? Yes. Can we show you what the understanding has been and how our teams have operated on it for the past at least four or five years? Absolutely, Commissioner. But once that GIS data set's uploaded, I think it's going to dial in even tighter on Marimar Beach and we're going to be, we're going to have less margin of error.
I just think it's, it's difficult for Codes to enforce something that you can't see.
I agree.
And tourists are, you know, if they can't see it, they don't know where to sit. So you, you got this back and forth and we need something that's concrete that if Joe Tourist goes out there, oh yeah, I can sit there, I can't sit there. Right now, you could probably, just like you've said, and a lot of times you can ask 10 lawyers or something and you'll get 10 different answers. You ask 10 people down there at the beach, you'll probably get 10 different answers.
I'll say this, our Code's position is, Code, so understand, the private property owner owns to that ECL and the public's use of the land seaward of the ECL is not to the detriment, to use the Supreme Court's phraseology and to paraphrase that, of the upland property owner. With all of that being said, our Code enforcement historically has not gone down there to regulate disputes between persons being down there seaward of the ECL or not. But when the Sheriff's Office has been called, their requirement under their standard operating procedure that's been adopted since either 2007 or 2009, has been a procedure that any owner who is seeking to oust a member of their public from an area where we know there's public lands, which would be the ECL, requires that owner produce a detailed survey that is sufficient for a deputy on ground to make that determination about where that person is. And in the absence of doing so, they're not kicking the public off the beach. So what we've operated in with that is, we're going to stand by that, both for our Code Enforcement Team. It's more about what the vendors do, and that's why we're being very clear, we're not going to let you vend seaward of the ECL. And we do want to dial that in a little better, because we do have some, we do occasionally have people that are line steppers. We understand that. But I will say, ultimately, outside of this most recent issue we've just had, there have been very few ECL issues where we've had an owner be the problem or a vendor be the problem in Marimar Beach over the last several years. We've had some issues, regrettably, where perhaps we, as the county and our Code Team, we needed to make sure we had people with proper training on the ground, and we've gotten a lot better about that over the last three years, I'll say that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Atkinson, what's the status of our customary use ordinance? Because it was never, and while it was deactivated, it was never repealed. So it's still on the books?
It is still on the books. It bears no legal significance in light of the outcome of the litigation we engaged in. Similarly, the ability to enforce it poses numerous legal challenges, as it did prior to the passage of this legislation. Ultimately, the original ordinance the county adopted to attempt to establish customary use is one of the primary reasons, when you look back at some of the legislation and the creation of it, was does the government have the ability to declare customary use or is it something that has to be found through a common law doctrine or another judicial proceeding? So while we do have an ordinance on the books, I believe, as the board will recall, and I, I'm going to answer your question, Commissioner Gladwell, I will say, and this is not directed towards you, I'll say to the board, we did briefly discuss this, I know some of you were not in those executive sessions, about what to do here. So I'm going to say it out loud for everybody. I know the two of y'all know this, so I think we're probably, it's more of a callback. Candidly, if we weren't still on appeal on a few minor places in customary use, that ordinance would already be repealed. And that was the intent at the end of customary use, was to clean up our, our books by repealing that and actually as part of our agreements, to clean up all provisions of our Code that were in contradiction to the judgments entered or settlement agreements we've obtained. That was where we were. The problem is, doing that prior to the complete conclusion of the case is in fact premature, so these last few cases that are up on appeal have drug that out. So the short answer is, it has very little legal significance, but once the case is fully brought to an end in the judicial proceeding, it is due to be repealed so that we are not having an inconsistent law on the book. The ability to enforce it right now would be just as tenuous as it was when we ended up in litigation about signs on the beach and other things. We're going to have an uphill battle enforcing that, even if we had not gone through litigation or the Legislature not passed it.
Very clear. I'm going to wait for public comment till we get through this and then we'll take all the public comment for this, okay? Because we're not, don't have a motion.
I think you had another.
Yes. So, I'm glad you said this, Clay, because you, you use the words day zero or negative one, and that's, that's a great way to describe that. So a couple of things. You're going to have day zero or day negative one upon becoming law, and then you're going to have that at the day that the beaches are restored. So there's a lot of things that, that I want to know, and I think the general public is going to have a wide interest in what is going to be the mechanism to definitively resolve the dispute. Can I sit here? Can I not sit here? In 1998, there were no disputes. Nobody cared. In 2020, there was chaos that existed and it got to the point that everybody tried to resolve the dispute. The county tried to resolve the dispute, it didn't work. The Legislature tried to resolve the dispute with House Bill 631 and it didn't work. There was never a mechanism to resolve the dispute. Now, what the Legislature is doing now and what Senator Trumbull did was very brilliant. And I know there was a lot of confusion and angst over the amendment that was filed, but it was brilliant. It was brilliant by Senator Trumbull in doing that, because by going, by taking the route of beach renourishment, you have a mechanism under Florida statutes that, that now that the lands would be viewed under sovereign submerged land statutes, correct, Clay?
Yes, I mean, that, that's the broadest way to put it, so I'll say yes. I won't go through the legal two on one level, you don't want to hear.
So that does something.
I'm sorry.
But until that, until the beaches fall under sovereign submerged lands, how are we going to prevent the chaos from coming back where people say, no, I can put my towel here, no, you can't. Or I can walk across the land, I can set up a chair. What are we going to do upon becoming law and prior to the beaches being renourished? How do we resolve that dispute? And then how are we going to enforce it?
Proper messaging, that's the biggest step. And so, and I'm speaking to you as your attorney, but the answer's really a non-legal one. It's proper messaging. Our TDC, our Code people who can be down on the beach, the Sheriff's Office, we all have to be hand in hand to properly message where public accesses are, where public beach is, where it is not, to explain where the rights are. We have to work, the TDC's talked about this at great length. Part of that is working with our industry partners. So to be clear, somebody renting a house in Seaside is likely going to be able to use the beach in Seaside. I say likely, because there could be some obscure exception, but the question is, can somebody who's staying in a neighborhood north of Highway 98 of Marimar Beach drive to Seaside and park and go to the beach? The answer to that probably is no. The answer to that has almost always been no, because Seaside would have told you, that's not how you do it. So I think it becomes a situation of proper messaging, one, Commissioner. Two, I think it is a function of, we have now established a level of normalcy. We do have, in many parts of this county, Marimar set aside because it is the ECL established area, but through the rest of the county, there have been very little disputes in certain areas, and then there have been hotbeds of disputes. Now, that could be person specific, it could be security guard specific or company, it could be, and I might say person specific, it could be either one, it could be the beachfront owner, it could be the neighbors. What I would say is, I think it is very critical that we properly message what those issues look like. And then I think until we can establish a path for more public beach through restoration would be to make sure that we identify these hotspot areas and do everything we can to make sure that if there are public lands or use rights available around them, we alleviate those. In other words, it is a prioritization of where do you put your public beach? The third step is something this board has already done, we've already talked about, and it's something that is going to be an ongoing, evolving process. We have lands in this county that lie seaward of the southernmost property boundary of Goldfront Parcels. We have Goldfront Parcels that do not own to the mean high waterline or the water's edge. And we need to make sure those are well established and clear and that those areas are not problems. But right now, it's probably a tradeoff we've got to get into of, if we have beach accesses that lead to no public lands or no public beach, okay, that doesn't mean get rid of them, if we're going to be doing renourishment. But if we have public lands or no beach access, why aren't we getting a beach access? And those are the questions. I mean, this is a broad-based question that your TDC team has to be engaged in with you. I candidly will tell you, having not been involved in the litigation, having watched it from afar, having watched it from an observer standpoint and then gotten involved in the litigation, the solution's not law enforcement and code enforcement. That'll help the worst of the worst and it'll solve the biggest issues, but it is a path forward in making sure we let that public know what that path forward is and addressing that as quickly as possible. The survey was the first major step, Commissioner, because it helps clarify where the public can go. We are actively working on getting that uploaded through the TDC site so that it will be ready before the summer season. I've been told that should not be a problem. But then again, I was also told the survey had taken four months and I think it took closer to 14. So those are those issues, but ultimately, Commissioner, is there a way to, for the county to adjudicate those disputes? The answer's no, but I will also say, neither the bill, the Legislature passed initially, nor the repeal, nor any other law on the books ever affected an individual citizen, group of citizens, be it an owners association or otherwise, right to assert their right as a member of the public to use the beach under customary use. So just because the county said the county is not pursuing its rights under the Florida law that existed and now has been repealed, the county did not surrender any individual citizen's right to claim or assert customary use. And so some of these hot button issues, frankly, go back to what they were years ago when it was not a problem. Well, how bad do you want to fight your neighbors? And there was not a litany of litigation about that, because people didn't choose to do it. Candidly, it was only when the county got involved and because of the nature of the notice provisions in that statute and the way it was set up, that we sued almost 1,200 beachfront owners, that we got a lot of people who had never said one word about it engaged. I can't tell you how many people reached out who said something between the lines of, well, I only intervened because I didn't know what this would actually do to my rights. I only intervened because I got served a lawsuit and I was in favor, I was supporting the county, but I don't like getting lawsuits served on me. Oftentimes, there's some combination of my neighbors told me about it. And then the third of, well, I didn't intervene, but here we're at the end of the case, I don't really want to give up anything if my neighbors are going to get something. The problem that was created is that customary use is a legal theory. Public use of the beach is something different. Customary use includes public use of the beach, but public use of the beach is much broader and entails much more than the legal doctrine of customary use. And unfortunately, we've spent the past several years focusing on a very narrow concept of public use rights. So can I give you an absolute, complete solution today? I wish I could, Commissioner, but I can tell you what I've laid out for you is the path that the board has attempted to start on. Wish we'd gotten the survey quicker. There are some things I wish we'd done more efficiently, but we're working on those and we're going to continue to.
One more question. So, and thank you, Commissioner Gladwell, I didn't realize that the, the county ordinance is still in a, or still on the books. With that being said, from a legal standing, do we need to, does that need to be removed from the books?
Yes, sir. It, it does, but again, I'm, without going through all the legal basis for that, because of the matters on appeal, it needs to stay until that appeal is done. There are certain claims that were raised relative to that ordinance that became parts of the litigation. Most all of those were against the county, by the way, but recalling or repealing that ordinance before we wipe the slate clean of the last remnants of that litigation could have unintended legal consequences. It may be very minor, but I would rather not invoke those, and I could certainly talk to each of you individually about that, one-on-one.
Okay, well, that's a lot of information. I'm still a little confused about the ECL line and exactly where it is, if it's at an exact spot, and is it something that we can look to see for in our TD, through the TDC?
It is.
When it has the map that will show us.
I want to be clear, the ECL is in an exact spot. The mapping application that Code uses and talks about is what has that limitation. It is a matter of the software limitation and the geolocation on an iPhone. Is it possible that we could map that ECL with GPS data points and have an actual handheld GPS device that's better than a cell phone for them? That's entirely possible. Now that we have this better survey data, that could well become part of that solution. But we, there is an ECL and it is well-defined. Just because our Code Enforcement Team's application has a margin of error built in does not change the certainty of an ECL and its location.
And just to, to confirm, that you stated that anything seaward of the ECL is public?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless, unless there is a caveat based on some other type of judicial determination, but broadly, the answer to that question is absolutely it is.
One other question, Mr. Atkinson. Back in my trucking days, we had trucks that would hit geo fences. Would this be considered something that we could have on this app where it'd be a geo fence, you know?
That, that would be the absolute best way to do it.
Okay.
But your truckers weren't using a handheld cell phone with an app that was trying to trust on the cell phone to use its Wi-Fi cell antenna and then satellite data to get there. So yes, that's, ideally, that would be where we would end up going. And whatever we should do, in my opinion, we should build out for the future use and placement of that ECL countywide.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything else?
I'm good on this end.
Okay, is that all of yours?
Except for just a announcement.
And do that.
Anybody else want to talk on this? No?
Okay, the last thing, I've, I've talked with Mr. Atkinson about this. This has nothing to do with the county's budget at all. It's, it's totally separate. It's just, I want to have, I've been, I've been reached out to by citizens and they want to have kind of a informal-type budget, question-type atmosphere to where I would just sit with my notebook and take notes and, and bring what their concerns and issues are to the workshops or to the, to our actual process budget meeting. So I'm going to hold that probably at the end of May, if not the first week of June. And if any of the other Commissioners want to do the same, great. If you don't, I'd be glad to go have one down at the South End and the North End, but that's up to you guys. I'm going to have one in Freeport.
And yes, Commissioner Curry, I'm going to say for the record for him, he did ask me about this. I said, please let Melissa set our official budget workshops and budget hearing dates so that we don't violate anything with the state. You're always welcome to old town halls, things of this nature, because the topic will be budget town hall, or the word budget was in there. I wanted our official calendar date set first. I wanted our official calendar date set first, so there was no confusion or question with what Melissa has to turn into the state. But this is just as appropriate as doing a staff budget workshop, which is something different than our budget process. But I asked him to put it on the agenda, say it, so I could confirm that for everybody, and it would at least occur after Melissa did it. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to run through the other commissioners to see if there's anything to be said, and then we'll open up for public comment. Commissioner Gladwell?
I've just got a couple of things. I'd like to recognize Ms. Denise Vogel's gang, who is our insurance manager for the state, for the fact, our fact insurance is with us today. We appreciate her coming by. And I'd like to thank Mr. Billy McKee and Ms. Melinda Gates. They graciously volunteered, volunteered to come to our community meeting last night in Red Bay about the landfill issue on Rock Hill Road. That was a very productive meeting. There was about 70 citizens there, so, and Billy and Melinda did a great job explaining the nuts and bolts, so I would appreciate, or I'm very appreciative of them. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Drake?
I'm good at this time.
Commissioner Anderson?
I'm good.
And I'm good. So we will open it up for public comments.
I have a quick question on how we're doing public comments, because you told Tabitha that she would get to speak on this when it came up, and now we're going to...
Would you come up here if you were to talk, come up here to speak? No, come on up here to speak.
Okay, but this is not my public comment. I'm trying to clarify something.
We're just a little confused on, you had told Tabitha she could speak on this Senate bill when it came up, so is this the end public comments, or is this comment on this and then there will be public comments?
It's the end public.
It's the end public comment. Yes.
She can talk about it.
Yeah, she can, but I think she wants to talk about more than that thing. Okay.
I should have been allowed to speak because I was told.
We didn't, we didn't have a motion, and so that's why, but you can come up and speak about it.
But there's going to be another public comment, can I have?
This is the only public comment.
You can come up and speak to it.
I'll play a little bit of each, and we'll see how it goes.
Tabitha, Tabitha Howard. Actually, I'm going to do audio. Here, just give me a second, please, because this is, I thought I was going to get allowed to speak with my agenda item that I came here to speak about because, and I was told, I got no answers or no comments. So instead, I'm going to start playing this, I'll just play a little bit of this, but then I'm going to go to something else. Let me put it up all the way.
Hi, man. They're just asking, what was that? They're asking what you want to do.
So basically, last year, I believe, we had trespass, this Rebecca had trespass Tabitha from all SDI property. So, and it still continued, we wanted that to be enforced. Just a minute, I guess, she had came up to the hut, which we know, south of the ECL line, you can stay down there, walk one, but then when she came to the hut, it's where we had, and she was, she's filming, and she basically edited it and said that, you know, we did all this stuff, and that's not the case. We never said anything about that, we stayed out there. It's when she posted that picture on the property, I can definitely see. She's very, very aware that she's banned for all SDI, she posted it on the internet, that she's been banned from, we never said that place.
How does the SDI thing work with the SOA and access?
She can go with SOA, she can go with SOA property.
But being part, being paying dues and the SOA doesn't grant you access to the SDI properties?
So, yes, so you have, so we have a, so now, like, if you go to Marina Bar Grill, she can't go up there. We, you want to go to the health club, can't go to the health club. So there's a lot of, so Sandeston and SDI are two different entities, and they have different properties that they own, so, our owners, SDI, basically have banned her, is the first one I've ever heard of it, but yeah, all SDI property.
But can they ban her? She's paying her SOA dues, as my...
So that's nothing to do with Sandeston, they don't pay Sandeston. So she was a health club membership, we agreed about that health club membership, and she knows that she has access to the health club, but she doesn't pay dues to SDI, she pays dues to SOA, which is for trash cleanup, free cable or something.
So none of the SOA stuff, doesn't have an agreement with SDI to use whatever they want to use?
We have a remit for access down there, that's how she gets onto the beach. There's a 150-foot beach that'll be able to set up chairs.
You're talking about the West Winds access down there for that reason?
Yeah, how you drove on the beach. They can use that and access their beach right next to Salton, that they're allowed to sit at right there. But as far as this goes, we own this property all the way, you know, to the ECL, to the beachside towers, that property, beachside, I know it's that.
Okay. So, the boardwalks are like a different property than the, SDI owns the boardwalks that she used to come here today, right?
I don't know how she got here, okay? All I know is when I got down here, she was sitting in the net. And she came up to the, to the hut and like tried to get the guys to say something on camera.
So, there's, and then, so then...
Can you give us a setup of what that was?
Yes, that was the police body cam, because I had five officers come down there immediately.
Come down where?
To Sandeston Beach.
Okay.
Yes, so then, right after that happened, because actually, Jason came down, and I thought everything was okay, because he basically said I could go, because, I mean, I'm a Sandeston resident, and as I was leaving, I kind of freaked out because I saw police officers coming, so immediately, I called the police, and I'm like, I had permission to leave, and I live there too. So then immediately, I got ahold of my SOA as well, and I talked to Amy, and she gave me a map, but I couldn't read that map. So then I gave her another, I said, "Send me another map," and she did, and everything's in yellow, she said that where I could go. And I said, "The yellow is the beach for SOA owners and guests. I can be at the beaches marked yellow, is that correct, Tabby?" And then, the next Friday morning, she got back with me, she said, "Sorry, I didn't see this last night, but that is correct." And I know where I was, I can be there. I pay my SOA dues. I'm followed around all the time anyhow, I'm really kind of scared being there. I mean, it's just, well, I'm not, it's my home. So, I don't know. But we do need to figure out the ECL line, and honestly, on the body cam, also, Jason said that for like $2,500, they can actually get a new survey done and put stakes in. That's on the body cam. It's 34 minutes long. I'd like to play it all, but I can't. But maybe sometime, it's really interesting, I've got some more stuff that I actually really wanted to play. But I'll just play that online.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can you give us the Cliff's Notes of what's in there that we would want to be aware of?
If I can play two more minutes, it's exactly two minutes.
It's kind of hard for us to hear it, Tabitha.
Oh, yeah.
So if you could just kind of tell us.
Why don't we ever send it to the board, so you can see it? I mean, if she wants to send it, I don't know.
Email it to her.
It sounds like this is a, well, it sounds like this is a civil issue dealing with her and her rights in the SOA with SDI.
But this is going to be everybody's issue with this ECL line. It's not just me, it's the Sandeston residents, they're also being kicked off the beach, not just me, there's other residents, they're contacting me.
Ms. Howard, it's been made very clear, you've obviously seen the email I sent to Commissioner Johns addressing this issue.
Yes, sir.
Land seaward of the ECL are the sovereignty right of the state of Florida, that nobody has the ability to kick anybody off of those. Now, in terms of what your rights are to be within the SOA, SDI, I can't weigh in on that, I don't know that answer.
I don't either.
But, well, and that could be a problem for everybody, but for the county, our position is unequivocal, and I'll say this for code's benefit as well, nobody who has a permit issued by Walton County to do anything should be interfering with the public's right to be somewhere that they have the right to be. So if we're granting somebody a permit, they're violating, shouldn't have their permit, if they're breaking the law, and they are breaking the law if they are running people off of state lands or county lands, with that, that's not a violation of state law or the public ordinance.
So what he's saying is, they should not have, have made you leave the beach?
Not from the, again, seaward of the ECL. Now, what else was involved there, I keep commenting on, but the vendor should not have been concerned.
And I actually have the app on my phone, and it's actually for 2020, the erosion line, and it needs to be updated to the new, to what's next.
Well, the ECL doesn't change year to year, it's the original one that was set, so it doesn't flexibly move.
We're trying to make it easier, so it doesn't have such a wide variation.
But it can be state, that's my understanding, that's what Jason had said from Sandeston. It's on the body cam. So, everybody get the body cam, 20 bucks, call Paula.
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
I thought you were talking to me, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right. No, you're fine, you can come.
Stephen Tatum here, I'm a real estate attorney who's involved in the customary use lawsuit on behalf of the beachfront owners. I just wanted to make a couple more comments about the ECL to maybe clear up some things. One of them actually deals specifically with the Sandeston Beach. Yesterday morning, when they set up chairs, the ECL was located about 19 feet in the Gulf. There was no land seaward of the ECL that could be used by the public. There are places all along Miramar Beach where, depending on tide, depending on wave action, is there dry sand to even set up on, south of the ECL, and it all depends on day, location. The ECL is not a straight line, the ECL meanders. When it was set up in whatever year it was created, when the revitalization was, I'm sorry, renourishment was done, they set it at the mean high water line at that time, which fluctuates up and down. And we've had beach erosion since it was done. There are several areas in Miramar where it's gone, there is no ECL. The county surveys indicate that. The only way to determine where an ECL is, is to have a survey, as Mr. Atkinson said, that indicates where a static point is, be it a beach walkover, a house, a seawall, and you measure from that point down to where the ECL, or mean high water line for that matter, is located. The, without having that static point and that measurement between those two distances, the mean high water line or the ECL, and whatever static point, you can't determine, you can't go out there and look at it and see where it's at. A GPS, maybe a handheld GPS that has the actual data points, a good one, could do it, you'd have to have all the data points from the survey, that would be the only way to really determine it. Staking is not an option. Y'all know how the sand is, the tides, put stakes out there, they're going to be gone in a day and a half, two days. Anyway, that's all I have, just wanted to add to the conversation.
Interesting, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Dave Roche-Cobb, R-A-U-S is in Sam, C-H-K-O-L-B. I'd like to ask a question before my comment starts. Mr. Atkinson, since we have a customary use ordinance in place, there's no dispute that the land seaward of the mean high water line, we've been talking about the, the ECL almost all day, but do we recognize that the land seaward of the mean high water line is the public domain? And would that ordinance not apply?
That's never been in contention, there's never been a dispute that someone whose deed says they own the mean high water line has no ability to control anything seaward of the mean high water line.
So that's the public domain, as well as any sand that is deemed by, you know, whatever surveys would say, that's public sand, right?
And the sovereign submersion land doctrine, I think that's what Commissioner Drake mentioned earlier, that's what we're talking about here, yes, sir.
So the ordinance is on the books, why not keep it in place, and why not apply that for customary use?
Because customary use isn't as broad as that doctrine, frankly, Mr. Roche-Cobb. If we tried to do that, we would limit our own rights. Candidly, the county has property that has been dedicated to the public. A great example is Seagrove. There's a large stretch of beach that's listed on the plat as dedicated as public bathing beach.
By Cuba Gee.
Correct. And that is absolute public right. It's not for the limited class of customary use of walking, running, jogging, hiking, fishing, surf fishing, that had to be adjudicated. It was for any public use right. And so the issue there, Mr. Roche-Cobb, is, we could choose to limit what the public does there by trying to impose customary use on top of the already broader rights. So our customary use ordinance would not grant anybody any greater rights than what already exists seaward of the mean high water line. It never did.
So anyone accessing from a public beach access, not a private beach access, may legally walk, play, use recreation from the mean high water line seaward, is that correct? And sometimes, that's even dry sand, it's not wet sand, it's dry sand. There are places where, where you can see where the line goes up and it's dry. And the reason I'm standing here is I'm trying to stop the commercial activity that is happening in, all the way up to the wet sand, and the intimidation that's occurring. So now I'll speak. The sand seaward of the mean high water line and the ECL is public domain. That sand may not be encroached upon by commercial or private activity through beach chair vendors on every Walton County beach. Vendors, private entities, or resorts may not block with beach chairs or other means sand that is reserved for public customary use by Florida Supreme Court ruling. No entity may intimidate through beach chair vendors, security guards use signs to lie about the law, or restrict the flow or customary use of that sand for the public under any circumstances. Allowing commercial beach chair vendors, also known as commercial activity, as well as private activity, to hinder, block, or restrict the movement of customary use of the public land or sand seaward of the mean high water line is against the laws of Florida as established in City Tonorama versus Daytona Beach Supreme Court decision. It's recommended the county commission declare, establish, and advertise a zone of public customary use seaward of the established mean high water line and the ECL that will not allow commercial and private entities to hinder, block, or restrict the normal and established public activities on the wet sand and any sand seaward of the mean high water line. These words come from the Florida Supreme Court ruling, as a thorough fair and haven for fishermen and bathers, as well as a place of recreation for the public. And it should not be considered as a transitory zone, it's been, that word's been tossed around a lot. People can set up a beach chair in the wet sand in front of commercially rented beach chairs, because that is the public domain. And I know it's very difficult for you guys to, to come up with some sort of way of managing this, because it's almost unmanageable, it's very difficult. And I thank you, Mr. Atkinson, for explaining where we're at in this situation, because it is confusing for the public, and it's not the public's job to decide how this is going to be handled. But there are people going to the beach, you know, it's mostly the locals that have to come up here and fight for this, but the people who rent a beach table, chair, or rent a house across the street from the beach, and they come down the public beach access, and they're immediately accosted in some places by beach chair vendors who are hired by private entities, and saying, "You can't sit here, you can't sit there." Well, those folks aren't going to come back. They're like, "We're not coming to this beach anymore." This is the first year, last year, that my sales went down. Rentals are down, real estate sales are down, and, and, and retail sales are down, as well as restaurant sales. So it's like, anything you can do to protect the public's right to use the sand that is the public sand, please do so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Randy, let me get this one beat first. Yes, yes. Her hand was up first, I'll get you next.
Today, I had an interaction with the sheriff's deputy, Sarah Day, D-A-Y. I went to the beach before I went here. I had an interaction with a sheriff's deputy on the beach today, and he told me that the public is only allowed in the wet sand, specifically where the tide is actively touching the chair, or the towel, or even their feet. The implication being, if you're not in the tide, you're not in the public space, which is interesting information to me. Have you guys had a chance to look at the survey? Yes? Keep going. Okay, just remember that, just remember in the back of your mind. The photos...
Ms. Day, I'll just go ahead and say for the record, I don't agree with that position legally on behalf of the board of county commissioners.
What?
No, what the deputy told you, I disagree with that.
No.
It's a fair statement of law.
I'm going somewhere with that, but that's happened twice in seven days with me personally. I have no idea how many other people have experienced that. So looking at the survey, the photos were taken on the morning of July 29th, 2024, during high tide. We know this by the angle of the sunlight and the direction of the shadows of the chairs and the umbrellas. By that afternoon, the tide had gone out and the water line had receded roughly 30 feet from where the mean high water line was established. So let me ask this question. If the sand that was part of the tidal process earlier in the day is now dry, are we saying that the current water line becomes the new property line? Because a large majority of the private beach signs say others walk along... Because a large majority of the private beach signs say others walk along the water's edge, that is not accurate. So what is the county's stance on this? When I go to the beach, I should not have to be in sand that is actively being affected by the tide. That is not wet sand.
I don't disagree with you at all.
You heard my position. I don't know how to make it any more clear than what I said.
He doesn't agree.
Well, here's the issue. The education is very lacking. And I know that code is gonna deal with their officers soon, and that's gonna be good, but the sheriff's deputy, it really wasn't any fault of his own, because this is what he's been told. He was told, "No, you have to be in sand that's wet and the water has to be touching your equipment, or your person, or whatever." I'm like, "So you want me to put my towel in the wet sand?" And he just looked at me, because he knows it's absurd. So this is a problem.
Ms. Day, if you would be so kind as to contact me, I actually have some availability the rest of this week. I would be glad to get the sheriff's general counsel on the phone with you, so we can explain what occurred, who the deputy was. Whenever we've had these issues raised by other attorneys, that's what I've done. I have no problem putting her in direct contact with that. I mean, I hope they can establish a citizen point of contact, so we don't have to call general counsel every single time. But this isn't the first time I've heard this, and every time it's been addressed, it's been addressed as, "We're sorry, that's not what they've been instructed to do, and we're not sure who told them that." But that's not accurate, and it's been addressed. So I'll gladly get you in touch with sheriff's general counsel, and I'll stay on the phone call with you, so that we can address all those issues.
Madam Chair.
Glad to do that.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, okay. Did you have anything further?
Yes, so in addition to code sheriff deputies that work the beach, by the way, they don't wanna be doing those calls, they don't have an appetite for that. Like, it's just ridiculous, as many times as they have to go out to tell someone, and reach down, and pick up sand, and have to do this. And I'm like, "Is that wet to you?" And they're like, "It is to me." And I'm like, "So is it wet sand?" But the vendor's behind me yelling, "It's not wet sand! The property line goes to a different line." And I'm like, "Where is it? Where is it? People aren't coming back." There were three families today that were harassed by this vendor and the sheriff's deputy. And the deputy, he's just doing his job.
Right.
But he's not educated properly. He knows.
Yeah.
He knows. Did you have a question?
Thank you.
No. Sorry.
Yes, no?
We're gonna let him talk, and then?
Okay, that's fine. She said she was done, though.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I'm done.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I got a question for her.
That's what I got one for her to do.
That's what I'm asking. You guys look like you have questions.
Apparently they do.
What are your questions?
I just wanted to make, wherever you were at, my first field trip, and I'm gonna have Chief Row come with me. I talked to him on the way up here, and he has no problem with going out there with me. So just hang out afterwards, so I can get your number, or whatever.
I can email you and let you know where I am.
I can get you Sarah's number.
Okay.
Is that okay, will you, Sarah?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom.
What beach was this on?
Lake Causeway.
Lake Causeway?
Which is a neighborhood beach access, but that's actually not where, the only place it happens. It happens all along the coast.
Let me ask Mr. Atkinson. Why can't she contact Mr. Corman or his officers and write this vendor a ticket? If they're out harassing the public, that should be a ticket.
They have a vending permit, and they're violating the law, absolutely.
Tony can tell you, he's been involved. I have an open dialogue with him about this. He's very well aware. There are, sadly, it's the homeowners.
But I don't care who it is.
He's working for them.
If they got a county permit to vend on that beach, and they're violating that permit by harassing the public, they oughta get a ticket.
If you want my honest opinion, I think he's truly confused as well, about what wet sand is and where people need to be.
Well, that's his problem.
Well, I think it's accurate. I think that you need to put some signs up at each beach access that says, "These are the laws, and this is where you can sit."
Thank you, thank you very much. You know, in the past, you can come on up, Randy, I just, you can come on up. I just wanted to say, in the past, we had like 20 feet from the wet sand that was public. And why that's gone is beyond me.
Good question.
Go ahead, okay.
Randy Lightner, L-I-G-H-T-N-E-R. Also on this body cam video that Tabitha was talking about, there's a clip of a Sandeston employee discussing with a sheriff's deputy, something about two jet skis and a boat that they've been working with the captain with the sheriff's department on, and that Tom Becknell said that if the sheriff's department can get, that if "they," meaning the sheriff's department, can get a grant, then they'll charge them for it. And if they don't get the grant, then they'll just give it to them. Now, people have tried to say, "No, Becknell's just gonna let the county use the boat and the jet skis." Well, that's even worse. And then someone else said, "Well, no, I think it's about the boat slip." Bottom line is, it doesn't matter. It might be legal, but it's darn sure not ethical in any shape, form, or fashion for the county to be seeking grants for anything they can get for free, whether it's two jet skis and a boat, or a boat slip. When you do that, you're taking money from someone, some other county, who probably desperately needs it. So I have that body cam video, I think my phone will play a little louder than Tabitha's if you wanna hear that. The other thing that happened on this video is this deputy, this deputy told the Sandeston employee, "Call me if she comes back, and I'll remove her again. Just don't tell her she hasn't trespassed, she doesn't know that." Now, if that's not a misuse of your authority, then tell me what is. There's two former deputies here, would you consider that a misuse of your authority?
Did you say that a deputy said that?
The deputy said, "I've got it." Do you wanna hear it?
No, just tell me, it's hard to hear that over here.
This is well outside the board's purview. If that's true, there are ways to address violations of civil rights, law enforcement complaints. And the Board of County Commissioners does not govern that.
And I agree with that.
And they have every right to go do that. I wanna be clear, but asking us to comment on it is gonna draw us into that litigation.
I apologize, I won't ask you to comment on it, but the public needs to know what it is that the people are so upset about, and what the issues are. Okay, if I'll stop my time, because I got...
Finish your time.
Go ahead and finish.
Okay. So the only other thing I wanted to say is, first of all, with the special magistrate, if you guys go that route, when it comes back to the VCC, does the public get to speak then, or do you just approve or deny, and that's it?
So you're referring to the DOA process?
Yeah.
The public's opportunities to speak in that process will be at TRC?
Okay.
At planning, and if they are designated party status before the LJ. The board's approval will be limited at that hearing to merely approving the recommendation, so in a consent agenda format, or if the board chooses not to, they can pull it off the consent agenda and put it up. But it is not designed to create a new hearing. That would be a due process violation.
Okay, okay. So we wouldn't be able to speak, we're never gonna get to speak.
On the recommendation.
At the planning.
You are a public communicator.
But not to the VCC.
Right.
Okay, okay. So on that note, and I mean no disrespect to anyone here, but I don't care how well I like someone, how great of a job I think they're doing elsewhere, never, ever, ever will I give my support to anyone who does anything to remotely suppress the voice of the public. So I hope you keep that all in mind, because I'm not the only person who feels that way. And nothing else is gonna matter that you do if you end up doing that. So thank you.
Randy, let me say something first.
Sure.
We're not trying to suppress the public at all.
No, I'm also, I'm sorry, let me clarify, because I didn't. I'm also talking about, we're talking about getting rid of this part of the public comments, anything like that, saying that once we sit down, you can address us, but we can't speak back. None of that stuff is okay. So I was talking about all of it.
The thing of it is, when you relinquish the podium and you go back, it's not, it doesn't make the meeting flow very well, and we're trying to make progress. So it's just, you come up the podium and you speak, and then you sit down, and then...
Correct, so what will make the meeting flow well? It's for you all to respond while we're still here. That's how you solve that, instead of making us sit down and responding.
Well, and we don't always respond. It's not a question and answer session, it's for, an opportunity for you to come up and speak.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, I said what I said, and I'm not alone in those thoughts. Thank you, sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Gladwell, then I have one comment about the QJ process.
Yeah.
You said the county was getting these boats and all, and was getting grants. I don't know anything about the county doing any of that.
I'm sorry, I believe that it was Walton County Sheriff's Office.
Well, that's a whole different ballgame.
They were speaking about a captain with the sheriff's office. But again, like I said, Tabitha, it didn't seem like you guys understood what was going on. I'm just saying, I think that the public who watches these meetings needs to know that there's actually something going on here, that there's actually something happening. Sandeston is actually harassing, and there is an actual relationship going on where it appears they're scratching each other's backs. And whether anybody likes it or not, the public needs to know. So since it's brought up here, I brought that up.
But the public also needs to know who's...
Yes, absolutely, I apologize.
And you're not talking about us.
Not the Board of County Commissioners, no, not at all.
We need to make that very plain. This has nothing to do with the Board of County Commissioners.
It appeared that they were referring to Walton County Sheriff's Office, but I'm not even 100% sure about that.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
While she's leaving, I just wanna make this comment about public comment. The Florida legislature's already made clear that the public's right to participate is not the 286.0114, which codified the public's right to participate for the first time into law, in terms of being heard and speaking in a meeting, rather than just being present, does not apply. That specific section of statute does not apply to any meeting during which the board is acting in a quasi judicial capacity. Many, many jurisdictions have completely eliminated all public input on quasi judicial proceedings to avoid creating a record issue. Walton County has repeatedly avoided doing that. What we're doing here is allowing public input at multiple stages up to, and including an intervention status to that. But when it comes back to the board, if we go back to a full new public hearing, there's no reason to have the magistrate hearing those to start with. So it's not, we wanna make sure, what we have actually done here is given two additional opportunities, minimum, two additional public opportunities, from what is provided in Florida law.
And I don't have issue with that, I think my sentences, they flowed together too quickly.
Fair enough, I just wanted to be clear, this is an expansion of that right.
I was just asking that question, and then stating that with the rest of the issues, I'm not okay with that.
I just wanted to be clear, we expanded that by ordinance from where state statute currently holds it.
I was gonna grab Mr. Bagby, I'll get you next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Jim Bagby, B-A-G-B-Y. And I may need a little extra time, because I'm here as your partner in the previous beach nourishment thing, but there's a couple of things I wanted to clear up. There's, part of this is backward looking, and that's what y'all have been focused on, on the, you know, how do we get in the customary use issue? And then, actually, the part I wanna speak on is the forward looking part. The backward looking, jet skis developments have all bought jet skis. Rosemary Beach bought a jet ski, it was for the fire district, not for the sheriff, and not for the county, because that was, the lifeguards were provided by the fire district. And so we had a jet ski so that they could race out in the Gulf. Once they got to Rosemary Beach, we even built them a little shelter for it. And multiple developments, Seaside, I believe, did one, I think Sandeston did one. So I think that's where the confusion. Wet sand, dry sand, number one, you have a rule, I think, where you have to leave an area where people can drive up and down the wet sand. That is not the mean high water line, and that is part of the problem y'all are having in this discussion. The mean high water line is an elevation. It is not a distance from a point. It is an elevation at the time of that survey. When we did the beach nourishment project in '07, the elevation, I think, was 1 feet, 1.09 feet above sea level. That is how you establish a mean high water line. You can pull up the data on the state DEP website, and it will tell you exactly what the height of the mean high water line is in Walton County. So it doesn't matter where the pictures were taken, what time of day it was, that's not how you establish a mean high water line. It's not, as opposed to an ECL, which is a known set distance on a certain azimuth from a monument about every 500 feet, and that line is established. The other thing is, you can buy equipment, I think Commissioner Gladwell, or somebody said it, you can buy a GP. The TDC offered to buy the sheriff's department 10 years ago, the equipment they needed to find the ECL in the western part of the county. It was about $1,500 then, it's probably $500 now. The sheriff's office decided they didn't wanna do that, that they would come out with the seven page document, which I'm sure Mr. Atkinson remembers well, and...
The standard operating procedure I mentioned, yes, sir.
And that was, you know, my personal opinion, the dumbest thing they could do, because I think they thought nobody would survey their property. And of course, when you spend $5 million for a beachfront property, another couple of hundred dollars to go out and survey it and establish exactly where the ECL is and the mean high water line, that was it. Here's the part, as your partner in the city of Destin, we both participated in the beach nourishment project in 2007. I need you, and this is why you need an executive director in your TDC, and this is why Brian needs an assistant. Where are you on the sand sourcing? There are a lot of steps, you know? Clay mentioned, your attorney mentioned, we have paused the hurricane storm damage reduction project? Yeah, no, we stopped it, okay? You stopped it. You didn't pause it, because it's not something you can do. You have, there are steps that you have to do. The survey establishes the mean high water line where an ECL does not exist. You need to go out and do the sand surveys, and I think some of you that were living here will remember the fights we got into on the quality of sand, even though the quality of sand that the people re-nourished after the '04-'05 hurricane season was worse than what was out in the Gulf that they were gonna use to sandsource the beach nourishment project 10 years ago now. So the other thing is, the state law, 1622, what was kinda glossed over, everything Clay told you is exactly right, but there are two types of projects. There are state projects, and there are federal projects. And what you want is a federal project, because in a federal project, the FEMA and the federal government comes back every 10 years and measures that beach, and if it's eroded, they automatically come back in and add sand to your project. That's what Panama City Beach has. They've had five nourishment projects since I've been here, and I've only been working in this county since 2003, so 22 years. The problem with that is, talking with the Corps of Engineers, the easements are for a state project. The state can waive the requirement for an easement for a state project. They can't waive it for the federal project, and the Corps of Engineers currently has several projects within the state that were, where the beach was critically eroded due to recent hurricanes, that are held up because they can't get the easements that are required for the federal project. So you may end up getting a state project, which is not what you want, but you need somebody down there, Brian, at the TDC, ram-riding this through for you. The other thing is, I've seen, and Clay alluded to it, there's one public beach access, Sandtrap Road, between basically Miramar and Sandeston, okay? What the beachfront property owners never quite got, because some people thought they got easements through their property, the private landowners' property, you don't. You have to go down a public easement, and then you can laterally go after the nourishment project as far as you wanna drag that cooler. The, we talked about the document easement, sand sourcing, there are steps, and I would just ask you to ask your staff where they are on the hurricane storm damage reduction project, because there are critical steps, and I'm just gonna tell you, this is a seven year project when you get started, and you haven't, when you get restarted, and you haven't even restarted. So you're gonna have this fight, you're gonna have all these people here for about seven years, telling you, "Why can't I go on the public beach? Why can't I go on the wet sand?", until you get that hurricane storm damage reduction project completed. And it's not an easy process. It took us over 10 years when we did the one after, in '06-'07, and that was after the '04-'05 hurricane seasons. For those of you that were here, know that was critical. So I would just say, you can get the GIS equipment, the ECL is established, the mean high water line is established, and you can pull that data in, you know, not everybody needs one, not every code officer, you just need a couple for whoever's working the beach that day. But we look forward to working with you, to do the two miles that we have on the beach nourishment project, or the hurricane storm damage reduction project, because all your nourishment project, or the hurricane storm damage reduction project, because all your beaches are critically eroded. Some of ours are, we have a little section in Destin that's not, but we look forward to working with you on this project.
And Mr. Bagby will be glad to get with you if you would like to discuss an update on the conversations we have been having over the last nine months with the Army Corps of Engineers and FDIP and the commissioners. So you understand, we're well aware of the difference there that he's bringing up. That's what we're working on, is making sure our easements are federally compliant. And much like Pinellas and a few other counties have had those problems, we are hoping the state's declaration here may put us into a different position. We don't know that yet, but we'll be glad to get with you if you'd like to, and we can update you on those conversations.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that information.
Did you have a question? You looked at me like.
No, no. I'm saying thank you.
Yes, sir. No, I've talked.
William Askew, Freeport, Florida. I'll make it as short as it's kind of chilly in here, and I'm sure everyone likes to go home.
It is, isn't it?
I'll read off my card if that's all right. I'm requesting clarification of waste management county garbage pickup program for the people who are elderly and handicapped legally, especially pertaining to like longer driveways. Okay? So now that we know where we're going. So the American Disabilities Act 1990 ensures that people with disabilities are able to enjoy full aspects of society, such as public accommodations, employment, private businesses, government organizations, government services. My interpretation of the American Disabilities Act defines a disabled person who has a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more life activities. I've not looked up case law or Florida state law as of yet to validate how this possibly discriminates towards legally disabled peoples of this county. All right. So I'm not stepping on anybody's toes right here, this is just my opinion, okay? As elected government officials voted in by the people, for the people, each one of y'all have a moral obligation for all your designated constituents in your specific districts to provide all required services per ADA guidelines. So a reasonable person who is handicapped legally, has the blue sticker and everything, who has a quarter-mile drive, are they, are they, is it unreasonable or reasonable for them to take a 95-gallon trash can a quarter mile there, a quarter mile back if they're missing a leg, missing an arm, in a walker, in a wheelchair, busted their leg? I don't think that that's reasonable. So my request is for clarification on what the county can do, working with waste management as well as the citizens of the county, in addressing the issue that the legally disabled people could provide documentation where they could have trash pickup at their house rather than have to drive down those long driveways or pull a 95-gallon trash can full of trash, 200 pounds, maybe more, down a driveway one or two times a week? Just trying to make it fair for everyone.
They have an option to get a smaller can. There are two different sizes besides that 95-gallon one if they don't need one that large, which it is awkward to pull that down there.
Correct.
So they do have the option of getting the smaller, which would be easier to maneuver, but I don't think that there's anything different now with the, with our new waste management than it has always been.
For instance, again, going back to the whole walker, how, whether you have a 35-gallon, a 30-gallon, a 15-gallon, if you have a quarter-mile drive, or anybody further, longer, half-mile, mile, it doesn't matter, you pick your poison, how are they going to do if they're in a walker, you know, a little four-wheeler, little one that has wheels and everything, to put that trash out?
How is it different than it was before, though? I mean, are you saying it's different than it was before?
It is. They do not, they do not drive down per the county, y'all's decision-making to pick up trash at the residence anymore. I'm over my time by 20 seconds, by the way.
I don't.
I don't believe there's anything that stops them from requesting accommodation from the provider, but we'll gladly talk to waste management about that. I will candidly tell the board, the county pays for collection. That doesn't necessarily make this a Title II issue under the ADA. I'm not going to weigh in on whether it truly does or doesn't. That's a much more detailed issue the Department of Justice could weigh in on, but private collection services for solid waste providers are not traditionally ones that require a specific level of accommodation for collection services. Now, certainly, waste management has to make sure their office is accommodatable, their phone lines have to be accessible, things of that nature. But we'll gladly talk to waste management about it, commissioners, and see if there's any type of accommodations, and make sure they have absolutely every bit of information available to the public and any disabled individual under the ADA that would be subject to Title II protections, assuming this program falls under it, that we can then provide. That's a very simple and straightforward issue to discuss how that is different than it was before, because it should not be a functionally different accommodation.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes.
Hi, I'm John Dillard, D-I-L-L-A-R-D. Like the department stores, except I don't own any. Many of you have learned my name over the last year and a half. I've been to Tallahassee and met with these fine gentlemen. I've had occasion to meet with you, trade emails with yourself, and Dan, we've not had a chance yet, Clay as well, we've not had a chance yet. HB 631 had a lot of unintended consequences that really decimated the growth that was occurring in our economy, both in terms of rentals, housing, quality of life, and retail spending. And unintended consequences have been horrible. We've talked a lot today about the ECL and the Mean High Waterline, and that's important for day one, and it's critical for day one. And there were some solutions offered by the TDC to buy devices that will tell us where those things are. They're only 500 bucks apiece. If the TDC doesn't pay for them, I will. But we need to get information into the hands of people so that we could tell people where they could actually sit and quit the misinformation that's occurring. I'm not directing that comment toward anybody up here, but we need to fix it, and it can be fixed. And it sounds like it would be fixed by Amazon tonight. I believe HB 631, the way it was handled, and I'm not directing any comment toward anybody here, caused a lot of problems that maybe could have been avoided. That's easy to say in hindsight, but that's all I have at this point. I wasn't involved at that time. I was here, but I didn't know what was going on to the great degree that I was, that it was. And I watched a lot of things that occurred here, and it really hurt my heart, and that's why I got involved. When I see people and small families being run off our beaches, it's just wrong. It's sick. It's ill. It's horrible. And we can fix it. We talked a lot about day one. Day one's important. That's the clarity part. But what's really important is day two, and that's re-nourishment, re-nourishment, re-nourishment. We need to be having executive councils, legal meetings, whatever you guys do. I run a CPA practice, I don't know how you do your deal, but y'all need to be having meetings. And Donna, I'm not picking on you when I say this, she didn't know that the new bill provided for re-nourishment, creating public access. This is something you guys need to know. And legally, I do feel, again, it was mismanaged from the get-go. I think if we, rather than suing 1,000 people, we should have picked a couple of test cases. Should have won those test cases. That's easy to say in hindsight. I appreciate your time, and I'm here if I have any questions. I know I can't walk back there and walk back.
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't have a question for John, but I would like to comment. He was at every Senate hearing that was on customary use, and he spoke eloquently about customary use. The man's a hero, in my mind. So was Saturday. So were a lot of other people.
Mr. Bush calm.
Yeah, but these, these, these people took time out of their lives to come to Tallahassee. You know, that was my job, to go there. But these people, that was their passion to go there. And I want to publicly thank every one of them that went because they made a difference. We, these, this bill was passed in the House unanimously. It was passed in the Senate with only two dissenting votes. But these people, and I, I did it, I was over there at every House committee, and it was, it was not easy. It just about wore me out. But so were these people from the public, and they spoke eloquently, and they spoke with passion that you cannot believe. And John, I want to personally thank you again.
Glad to do it.
He also worked.
Glad to do it.
I agree. You also worked very hard on social media, too, informing people and letting everyone know on Nextdoor and, and things like that. And you were at the meeting when, I think you, you brought it up to Jay Trumble and Shane Abbott, and I think that's where that turn happened, that night. So, yes, thank you very much.
It did happen that evening.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And we had 98, essentially 98% vote of the legislature approved. And in fact, I even told my wife, if we can get it to the Senate floor, I think we'll win by 98% margin, at best, and at worst, 90. And I did ask the House to vote unanimously, and they did. The county has a mulligan that doesn't come across very often. Let's do this right.
Absolutely.
Well, we appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't want to come back and talk.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, Ms. Harris?
I have two quick things.
State your name.
First off, we should have done customary use and let Suzanne Harris, should have done customary use by itself and let all these people speak on customary use, and then let the people that had something else to speak on come under public comments. But anyway, there is, Brad, John Moore stopped me to tell me that there's a rural Renaissance package, healthcare package, which will help y'all tremendously with Holly Holt. Ben Albright and the Senate President, it's his initiative. And he said that it will pay for a large, large percentage, and he is pretty sure it's passing, so I know Brad knows about it, but that it will pay for a large percentage of what Holly is doing now. So that would probably be good. And he also said there is $250,000 for rural counties, and this first part's only for rural counties, too. But there's $250,000 for new doctors to come to a rural county that they'll be given to open up their office. So that should bring, that should bring a lot of new doctors in here, and that the new hospital is getting a pediatric surgeon that has already agreed to come, and he is an orthopedic surgeon only for pediatrics. That will be wonderful for this area. The second thing, I've known Bobby Holt for the whole time he's been here, since he was, as Stan said, when he was on the road. Bobby is an outstanding person. I didn't think he, I didn't know that what Stan said about he had some hiccups or problems in his first years. I didn't know that, because Bobby used to work for me off-duty, and I can tell you, Bobby's one of the finest. I probably worked 90% of the officers of the old days, and Bobby is an asset to this county. Bobby, I personally hope that you come back and you get active in the county, because you have been a great asset. You've been a real great asset. And believe me, I know about the court system because I've been in front of Judge Wells and the rest of them on my public records lawsuit. He is great to everybody that comes in that courtroom. He helps old people. When I had to take my little Shih Tzu to court with her little papers for Mr. Shipman, Bobby was very good to let my little Shih Tzu come in and sit at the table with my attorney. I think Bobby deserves a big round of applause from every employee in this county.
He does.
I think Bobby is great. He has been wonderful with all the fights and, and the county commissioners and people telling him to throw this one out and throw that one out and come to the diocese. He has done it with grace, and then he's apologized to them on their way out the door. Bobby is a great person. He needs to get active. You need to run for something, Bobby, because you've seen it all, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate you. I don't think you had any hiccups. I think you did a great job.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you very, very much. We have, we still have one other item, don't we?
We do, Madam Chair. Item 41 is the Cat Island Estates Phase II Play Out. This is a request to continue the May 26, 22nd, 2025 BCC meeting. May I please have that motion?
Motion to continue.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.